Thank you. I just, when I start scrolling up, then I don't know where I am. I generally write down when I...
I was told that they can't hear us, Brandon.
Are we muted? Oh, yeah, we're muted. There you go.
Can you hear us now, guys? Oh, yep.
She's looking for them. They're down here.
Oh, boy.
Oh, they are? Somebody want to tell Lynn that they're here?
Lynn?
Well...
Hey, Lynn, we found some agendas, I think. Okay, thank you.
See this here? Can we lose that? So that makes that bigger? A lot, then forget it. Because I didn't know that it's going to keep, that's going to move up then.
I don't need one, honey.
Or not? Uh-oh, that will really be a problem. See the, well, no, see the screen? Can we get rid of that whole, like, quarter and make that the whole? Good. Does everybody have that on theirs or no? Do you have like a, do you have? Oh, it just pushes it and it goes right to it?
Yeah.
Oh. But we're going to take them in order, so, um, I'm going to call the meeting to order. Are there any comments, uh, from the board on topics not on the agenda? Nothing? Anybody? Um, my only comment is on, today is the 19th. Um, I don't have a calendar in front of me, but on the 26th will be Brandon's, uh, one-year anniversary here of his employment. And, um, I'm sure each of you are, and I hope lots of the public have had their chance to meet him, to talk with him. And I appreciate his coming to the town despite all the hardship starting on March 17th. We certainly have been given lots and lots of information, uh, on a whole variety of topics that he gets into. And I don't tell him that enough, and I called him, I know he talks with me frequently, and I, and I said, I just called him out of the blue one time, and I said, just simply that I'm glad you came here. And, um, so with that, do you have any comments, Brandon, on topics that are not on the agenda?
Thanks, Dave. I appreciate that. Um, I do have just one comment. I can cover the other couple of topics under my, my report. Um, on the February 2nd Select Board meeting, we're going to have the room rearranged the way that it would be for town meeting. And each table would have an iPad on it with the camera set up to them, um, but no audio. So we'll use this audio source, and we're going to have two projectors in the middle of the room, and the tables will be in a big circle. Um, and this, we're also going to be using Zoom for our meeting platform in the next meeting. Um, so we per, we made that purchase today and set up the town's account. Um, so I just wanted to make that comment so you're not surprised when you walk in the room on February 2nd.
Where's the camera on these bigger ones?
Uh, it's, they're right at the top, but they're very...
It's great?
Yeah, you can barely see it. But they're very, very clear.
Trying to look handsome.
I think those days are past.
They have filters. We can, we set up a filter.
Makeup? Joey, makeup?
Just powder.
Okay, powder. Good. Grease, right?
Yeah.
Grease. Um, is that, is that it, Brandon? That's?
Yep.
Okay, that's the only thing. Um, and we're, we're going to talk about town meeting here in a bit. I, I don't quite know where this is on this, but we haven't formally, uh, we haven't formally said that we were going to do it, although the, the, uh, if the board remembers, what we were trying to do is to, to make the, uh, the bu, since we were so focused on the budget process, that no matter what, we were going to have to get through it. And Brandon was spending a lot of time and effort developing this, and so, um, I did find out from Floanne that, that the warning does need to, to take place by the 31st, which is oddly enough, this year falls on a Sunday, so obviously, we're going to do it before then because we're not waiting until, we're not, we're not doing things on a, probably on a Friday, Saturday, or Sunday. So, um, I, I hope you all read my email. It was just outlining that, that if we had to have another meeting to actually give the administration time to formulate the, the, uh, numbers in the warning, because past history has showed that we may gotten a number off every now and again, and then we had to have a meeting anyway. So then we could potentially finish tonight, um, and then all of us could come in and sign the warning, provided that it's correct. But, but right now, it'll, I thought we had to have the warning done by around the 25th. That's not true. Floanne corrected me, and so that's where we're at with the meeting. And, and we'll be talking about that.
So talking about it is not on the agenda, Dave?
Okay. Well, it's, it's not on the agenda, so I, I, I recall at the last meeting, the board, we kind of polled the board, and, and I thought the majority, or maybe there was no objection, to leaving town meeting alone. So why don't we take care of that now? Because it, it, I don't have any other information, and maybe John does as far as the potential of, of deferring the meeting. I don't know that we'll know any more information with state aid. We generally don't. And, and so I'm not sure that it matters. The only thing that would matter would be if we held the meeting in May, that potentially we could have a tent and we would have some kind of in, uh, in-person attendance allowed. Right now, we're planning on all online, on virtual attendance.
Motion?
Yes.
Make a motion that we hold an informational meeting on February 20th, Saturday, February 22nd? Kind of usually begin.
I think the, the, oh, the town meeting would...
The school, too.
The town meeting would be the 27th.
Right.
You said 22nd.
I mumbled. 27th.
Okay, so that will be the actual town meeting, and then the town vote would be March...
All articles voted by Australian ballot on March 2nd. 2nd.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded that we hold the informational meeting, and, and the times can be announced. I, I don't know the times. I saw an email this morning saying something about the school at 10 o'clock in the morning, but I, but I don't know, I don't know that.
We've done that before with the school at 10:00 and us at 1:00, but that usually left a really big gap, and there's no lunch to be had, so we had to try to put them together.
Well, and I've had some thoughts about that. Did you have a question, Lynn?
Um, the last time I organized it, the, um, school was at 10:30 and the town was at 1:00, but we did have lunch.
I, I did see an email from Floanne and going back and forth to, to Mr. Baker today, something like 10 o'clock in the morning for the school, but that's a little uncertain. Just so people know, my thoughts are that if the school is interested in, and, and I don't know this yet, uh, if the school is interested in using this building and the setup technology, Brandon has set up like Zoom with just a different link, uh, that that's agreeable to us, and we would finish our meeting and then leave, so not to have too many people down here at once. So, so I agree with everybody saying that there's not going to be any meals and every lunch. Having said that, we haven't had a discussion yet with the school to see if they're going to set up in the school and use the link, and it be virtual, which, it's going to be virtual. Whether they're going to use that building, and they could, but because they're going to have a, uh, I'm sure they're going to have a, a visual display similar to ours. Or they'd like to use this building. That's the only thing up in the air.
They do, they have SAPA there, so they should be...
So there's a, there's a coordination and a timing issue about what will be on the warning for the meeting?
We need set times, then.
I think we probably do in the motion. Either that, or to have the times on your motion set to the town manager and the, and the, uh, the school.
School usually goes first.
We could, we could work that out with the administrations.
We, we have the draft warning. Um, each of you had one. And we added dates and times, um, and, and these are all the articles that we anticipate unless any changes are made tonight, uh, but we believe we, we have everything.
But, but is the, is the, um, is this just for the town meeting, or is this for the school meeting?
Yeah, this is the warning for the annual town meeting.
But, so, so we're warning at 12:30 in the afternoon? So the school would... The school has a choice, either before or after that.
I believe they stayed at 10:00.
I don't know. I'm just throwing that out there.
Is there anybody from the school on, maybe, that can verify, or?
Anne Marie Redman. Can everybody hear me online?
I, yeah, we can, I can hear you.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm here. Um, I guess we didn't think that there would be any change. We just were sort of planning on 10 o'clock. I didn't hear any other discussion other than 10 o'clock.
And that's, and that's fine, because unless, unless, the only, the only difference would be, are you guys all set? No, you're not all set.
I'm working on it. He lost everything.
I just, it's just a thing, I can't see the time, I think.
There, we have another one down.
It's a domino effect.
It's like, okay.
Doesn't have a Kickstarter.
Anne Marie, the only, the only thing, the only thing that I see is our meeting would be warned at 12:30, and if we did hold it in two different places, and then the school meeting continued, then that would be a little difficult. We, we've had meetings continue before, but then the moderator would postpone the next meeting because it would be in the same place, and it carried over. So that would be the only challenge.
Okay, yeah, I don't, I don't know where they want to have it either, if they want to have it at the school or have it at the town. I, I don't know that information either.
Yeah, okay. So why don't we have that worked out between Brandon, the town manager, and either BJ or Jean Marie or Dr. Baker, or you, or yourself? Is that okay?
Um, that's fine. The only thing is, is I have to get the R flyer in, um, and has to, like, start getting Xeroxed first thing tomorrow morning, so I'm, like, finishing that up tonight is, and then I'm done with this meeting.
Yep.
And I sort of wanted to put that information on there, so, I don't know, can't you just decide?
Yes.
That's a good idea.
No, that's not, and 10 o'clock is fine, but the flyer, the flyer, okay, so then it really won't matter where it's held because we're not going to allow any people other than the participants. So the, the link, the link would be important, but not the, not the... Yes.
The link's here.
So it's, it's okay, I guess what I'm saying is it's okay with us if you start at 10 o'clock.
I lost my connection. Um, if Brandon can email me the link, that would be good.
Yeah, okay.
Anne Marie, what, what's yours usually take? An hour and a half tops?
Um, I've only done one of these meetings. It was last year, and I know we were going to before 12:00, um, so...
Check the chat.
I'm just, my, my, what my thought is, that rather than leaving a big gap for everybody to get offline than have to get back on, if we could try to have them come together fairly quickly. But on the other hand, if your conversation drag, drags on more than what we expect, then that would screw things up.
Yeah, and people might want to take a break and go eat lunch, just if they're on homes, too, so.
Yep, yep. Okay, I, I, we've got to do something.
10 is 12:30.
10 to 12:30, that's what we're going to set. We're just going to have to move forward.
I agree.
So there's a, there's a motion has been made and seconded to have the town meeting virtual on the 27th of February, that Saturday, at 12:30 PM, and voting to be by Australian ballot followed on that Tuesday, March, what is it, 2nd or 3rd? 2nd. Is it the 2nd? Can't be. Got to be the 3rd.
It's the 2nd.
Oh, we have 28 days in February?
Yep.
Okay. March 2nd on voting. Um, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye? Any opposed? Okay.
Brandon, can we release that to the papers?
Yep.
To get it in?
Is that okay, Anne Marie? We just kind of made that motion, and that's going to happen then, so all the logistics are over, it seems.
Okay, so 10 AM, and we'll figure out later where the, where we're physically going to be?
Yep, yep, and you're welcome to be here. Uh, you could, BJ or, or, uh, Jean Marie or, or someone from the school connected to that presentation could contact Brandon. He's locked into Zoom here, and if you'd like to do that, that'd be fine with us.
Yeah, I, I think we'll just have Brandon set up the Zoom. It'll be the same Zoom address for both meetings.
Yep, okay. Good. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Yep. Is there anything else that people would like, any here, any, uh, people here want to discuss anything to do with that meeting yet? I mean, it's going to take a little bit to, to, uh, for a presentation. Obviously, this is different, and there's got to be a lot of coordination between the moderator, John Campbell, and, and, you know, who's going to organize, who might want to speak, and that, it's going to be, I, I, you know, it's going to be 100 dots on the, on the screen.
Yeah, and you're looking for, either if people don't know how to raise their blue...
Or there's going to be some kind of a coordination. It's going to, it's going to take longer time. It's a lot harder to do that than see a raised hand, because it may come across like a message like Anne Marie just sent, and somebody like Brandon is going to be, or Olivia is going to be sitting at a computer giving a paper to somebody else who gives them the thing to John Campbell, who's trying to run the meeting. That's what I see happening. Some kind of line, so that there's not a lot of stale airspace. Do you have a question, Paul? I'm not sure of that yet. We'll work all that out, but I'm just thinking ahead about if somebody wants to talk, and, and how is that going to filter through the, yes, you're next, and so forth, without a lot of airspace delay? Did you have a question, Paul?
Yeah, I just, I was curious, do you think you have enough people, staff, or do you need some volunteers for that?
Oh, we're all set.
Okay.
Yep. We, we trans, we got Zoom today and, and started wa, watching training videos.
Right here is out of it.
Pretty confident that... I talked to John Campbell.
I have no idea.
I think we're going to be just fine. It'll be a little, I mean, it's just the first one that we've ever done.
No, no, absolutely. I, I didn't know if you needed some volunteers to help with any of that, looking and watching, and...
Joey?
Just wanted to say it may be worthwhile for all of us to kind of help spread word that we're doing all virtual, not in-person. Um, between the two of us, Brandon, we can probably tackle on social media or whatever, but there's people that you, that you see. I know there's a couple older people that are going to be totally confused by the fact that they're going to show up to town meeting at the school, and nobody's going to be there.
Just said they're doing a mailing. If we could just get a line in the mailing.
I think we should do something, so...
Even if it's like a quick demo link.
Let's split the cost and, and at least get our...
Yep. Paul, maybe if, who, DeForest, are you going to be taking the minutes?
I usually do, if you'd like me to. I'm a little bit...
Okay, and then maybe Chauncey can come in and, and help with the communication.
Yeah, I'm not going to volunteer, but you're welcome to reach out to Chauncey.
Did you have a question, Mike?
Are we mailing a town report?
Yes.
Yes.
We voted on that a long time ago, that, that mailings go out.
Something should be in that.
Well, but, 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 but I think what John was alluding to, which is, I'm on board with, is like right now. Not necessarily numbers and budgets, just an informational thing going out now, a postcard saying, "Did you know? This is what's going to happen. Please go to the website." If you don't, if you have a question, call the town office. They'll provide the links. Financial data to come separate. I'm all in on having a notice saying that we're not going to have a public town meeting.
Yeah.
I'm talking about a postcard right now, like, this week, headed out, saying that we're, this is what we're going to do, and that we want your help, and we want your, we want your, to answer your questions. We want to take them. But it's different.
And I believe the town report has to be available 10 days before the meeting.
But I don't want to wait that long for this.
No, no, absolutely not.
For a notice. And so I just, you know, and the town report sometimes is a little bit late, and I don't, we get a lot of blame, and I don't want to do that. I don't want to do that at all.
You want him to send that out, or you just let Brandon just do that?
Everybody okay with that?
Absolutely.
I, I, I'm on.
Yeah, I just...
We'll go with the emergency management if we have to.
But my, I think, to, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Mike's point, I almost think if we haven't already done the printing for all those, you should have a page in there re-explaining it, and...
Yep.
Some detailed instructions.
Even if they can just slip a flyer in it, because don't they, like, seal that thing for the mail? They don't put it in a package.
It depends if you're sending out a postcard or an eight and a half by 11.
Hold it like that.
Yes.
Not usually.
No, I'm, well, I'm talking, I was talking...
I'm talking about the town report.
That's what I'm talking about, too.
No.
When that goes, we're not mailing that?
They're not sealed.
No, that motion was defeated. They're going to, I believe they're going to be mailed.
No, they're going to be mailed. That was defeated. They tried, a couple years ago.
Yep. But all, all I was getting at was, to Mike's point, he wanted something with that town report, and I think your idea of sending something out right off the bat is great.
Yep.
But I also think there should be something, so, I don't know where that postcard went to, but I've got my town report here, because I've got my notes in it. You open to the front page, and it tells you how to get online, how to do what.
And the link.
Yeah. So...
Any other questions about the logistics of town meeting, anyway? Okay. Are there any comments from citizens, um, not on the agenda? Topics not on the agenda? We can take them now. Anybody? Anybody online? Okay, can I have a motion to pass the minutes of, uh, January 12th?
2nd.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes of January 12th. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Town manager report.
So I just have a couple of things. Um, one, Jean Marie Oakman contacted us and let us know that, even though it's their turn to nominate somebody for the service award, they won't be able to do it this year because of COVID. Um, therefore, the town would, would be doing this two years in a row. Um, Anne Marie Christensen and John Arison both provided me with a recommendation. Do we want to discuss that right now, or?
The only question I have is, um, it, was either one of them a name?
Yes.
Okay, then I think that that, because I remember somebody saying here at a meeting or two ago, I'm not really sure about how it would be, um, kind of, uh, the, for lack of a definition, the entire group that has dealt with COVID-19. So that was more of a, a general, uh, type of recognition. If it's going to be a name, then I think what's happened in the past is we give a little bit of time or, or consideration, then we talk about, I thought we've talked about it in an executive session before.
Okay.
With a name. So, did those two, did John and Anne Marie forward different names? So the same name, or?
The same name.
Okay. I, I don't know. I, I heard a lot of yeses. Is that where the board would like to be on that?
Executive session?
Yes, is that, okay. I see, I see three heads shaking.
Yeah, I guess for it to kind of be somewhat of a surprise, at least until town report goes out.
Yeah, it has been, yes. Okay, let's...
Write up, do the write-up, too.
Yeah. Okay, I, I will take that up potentially at the end of the meeting. I didn't want it, but it is what it is. Is there any other things that you, on the town, on the town manager report?
Uh, just, just two things I want to touch on briefly. Um, this, this, the first is the town website goes live tomorrow. Right now, our website is off the air, uh, because a transition is taking place. So that should, you should be able to start seeing it, um, throughout the night, and then by tomorrow morning, tomorrow around noon, the website will be fully transitioned. The other website has disappeared. Um, it's, it's no longer, it's no longer there. So over the course of the next couple of weeks, we'll still be fine-tuning information, um, and populating and, and changing narratives and so forth, um, within each department's page, but the website's pretty much done. We have a couple of other ongoing issues. One is the fire department contracts. The second is the 2014 purchase and sale agreement, um, training and refinement of the administration. We have some draft policy proposals that have been put forward, transfer station negotiations, grant applications, the Tenney Tree Project, um, and an RFP for the town audit going out. Um, so we've, we've received some questions about, um, some of these issues, and we are working on them in the background. And once we're ready, we'll, we'll move forward, um, and request that it be on the agenda for discussion.
Any comments from the board on town manager report? Yep, thank you. Okay, let's get into the budget proposals, FY22. Uh, first up will be the general fund overview. Did you want to lead us through this, Brandon, or did you have somebody that wanted to, or how do you want to approach this?
Yeah, I, I can go ahead and do it. Um, so we, we put together this budget narrative, and then basically, once the select board approves the budget, um, we're going to go through this overview, um, and change the numbers if the numbers change tonight, and then it'll be a final document. So if there's any, um, feedback on, on what's written, a lot of that stuff that's written is just for the select board, and the final draft will consist of, um, exactly reflecting the budget. So the first thing that we, and we're going to put this online for the residents to view, um, because we understand that, um, just putting this up, it would be a little bit complicated to read, and this basically is a summary of the budget, um, in narrative form. So, um, the general fund overview, as you know, the general fund consists of administration, listers, land use, police, fire, town clerk, finance, and the Procter Library. Um, it doesn't include the transfer station, that's an enterprise fund, and it doesn't include the highway department, the highway fund, so you can't interchange, um, money there. The remaining departments, um, well, the administration budget accounts for 94% of the revenue in the general fund, um, and the remaining departments account for the other 6%. Um, so there's a chart on page three, um, that shows the breakdown of the departments. And then there's also a chart that shows, um, general fund tax revenue since FY18. So it's, it's remained very stable. Um, so it's, it's remained very stable. On average, it's increased $4,534 between FY ' '18 to FY '22. Um, on page four, there's a general fund total revenue from FY '18 to FY '22, um, and that has fluctuated on average at $281,000. Um, in FY '18, it was $1,276,000, and, um, as you can see, the trend, it's been increasing, our revenues have been increasing. Um, the second chart is, um, is the general fund total revenue proposal for FY '22. Um, so we're proposing no change to, to general fund total revenue. Um, on the next page, on page five, this shows the fluctuation, or the increases and decreases for departments, um, for FY '22 as compared to FY '21. So, as compared to the budget that we're, um, living in right now, to the one that we're proposing in FY ' '22, um, at a glance, you can see that fire services are increasing, police department is decreasing, land use, listers, town clerk are increasing, finance, library are decreasing, um, administration is increasing. So there's, there's some good explanations for some of the decreases and increases. Um, one of the changes that we made is we spread IT services across all departments in the general fund, um, so that we could have a better picture of the finance for each department, um, and the services that they use. Um, so I reached out to our IT company, we reached out to Nemrick Services, and they broke it out per department, and that's why you see between a $4,000 to $6,000 increase across all departments. Um, other than that, there is some other changes that we'll get into as we move through the budget. Um, does anybody have any questions about the general fund overview?
Brandon, can I interrupt? Just, on, on page three, this is just a suggestion, if you're going to put any of them in the town report. If you look, a glance at that chart looks like it's going up like dickens, and it's on a steady incline, but when you look at the numbers, it's only up $5,000. So my point is, if you change the column on the left a little bit, it doesn't look so severe. Because people just look at it, oh my God, it's going up like crazy.
Yeah, I see what you're getting at. And, and that's not, that's not tax revenue either. That's, that's revenue from a variety of other sources.
Okay.
Um, so maybe I should clarify, well, it does say general fund total revenue. Um.
But, well, what are?
I'm just cautioning any charts that get put in the town report.
Yeah, absolutely. Maybe we shouldn't include that chart. It doesn't mean the taxes are increasing. The taxes are on the previous page, on page three, FY '18 to FY '22, general fund tax revenue. And the next chart is total revenue, um, revenue from other sources other than taxes.
Well, well, but one of the things that you went over with me, uh, I don't know if it was last week or not, would, you had a breakdown of what those revenues were, and for, for instance, one of those is $42,000 of delinquent taxes.
Correct.
Year over year. So.
Ah, good point.
The book, the books, so it's not, it's not fresh taxes per se.
Yes.
And so, so we've never done that before, and perhaps we should, I don't know. I know Mike and I would probably agree, but, and, because when somebody pays their taxes, I'm told from Suzanne, that it goes to the furthest back. It's not necessarily that this year's tax. And so, it's unfortunate that we can't seem to be able to track that, like specifically 2021 tax paid, but any year prior to that. That would be really helpful. But for, but that's what he just told me last week, where that added to the, even the year-end surplus. It's because we're, the policy is working, and we're collecting more of the money that has been owed. Uh, so that's really important. That's just one example. I think you told me that current use was funded a little more, and more people got into that.
Yep.
It's, that's a diversion of non-property tax revenue, a di, a different source. Not a diversion, it's a different source of revenue for the town.
And once we jump into Advent, we'll, we'll dig deeper into the revenues.
Yes, yes. Is there any other questions about the, Mike?
Uh, two, uh, one is, uh, just, uh, an understanding. With the IT services, uh, you broke them out and spread them out over different departments, and it shows increases in those departments for IT services, but it, it, the effect on the general fund as a whole is, you know, right, it's pretty much the same.
Yeah, there's.
You just broke it up, spread it out.
Yeah, this way we could adequately understand what each department costs to run, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear that it wasn't an increase in the, in the, in the budget at all.
No.
It just increased department budgets, but it didn't increase the general fund budget.
Yeah, there were several washes throughout the budget.
Okay, so, yes. And tax collection, Dave, what you had just mentioned, um, uh, I believe the tax collection policy requires two things to happen. The contract requires them to catch up on delinquents and stay current. So you do track them both separately.
But I'm talking about payment into the office.
Yes, that's what I meant to.
But it's, but it's a little hard, because let's say that I owe $1,000, but the thousand didn't really, it, it was some to the rear and some to 2021. It doesn't differentiate what, what you paid on. You paid, and it all gets lumped into the, uh, into the revenue line of taxes. We don't see a budget line that says delinquent tax, here you go, the amount.
Right, right. Okay. Are we, are we looking to get to that?
No, I just, it, we can't do that right now. But I'm just saying that when, when, when we look at these numbers, and we're going to look at some here in the next line, when we go into the fund balances, Brandon will give you the breakdown of what they are, or where some of them are coming from. So it's not necessarily accurate to say, oh my God, the, that, that a particular year is, is way over-budgeted, or there's a lot of money left over. There's some other things that are, that happen in that, to lead up to that.
Thank you.
Um, do you want to go into fund balance now? Are you done with general fund overview?
Yeah, if, if nobody has any questions. Does everybody under, understand that? Okay.
Just a quick question.
Yeah, go ahead.
This whole packet, do you have, did you send, you didn't send this to us?
So this is the freshest copy. Over the weekend, we recently confirmed everything, and we made a lot of edits throughout. So the one I sent you on Friday, um, was the unedited draft version.
Okay, so, if you don't mind, send that back out later.
Nope.
Just, and then I'll take this with me, but.
And, and it's, this is going to change again tonight.
I figured as much. We got, do we have a revision or a date on, oh, it's the draft number three, okay. Yep. Gotcha. No problem. Thank you.
Ready to go? I mean, we got, I'm sure people are waiting for, to talk. So let's go to the, uh, to the fund balance. Um, as we spoke at our last meeting to deal with the highway surplus fund, we're now moving into the general fund. The general fund audited, you can read along with me, as of June 30th, 2020, is $170,890. Um, we have decisions to make with that. Um, that's significantly higher than the operating budget, in addition to the $138,000, I believe, that's in the reserve account already, which was the 10% cap of the quote rainy day fund. It's an unalloc, uh, it's an unallocated source of money that we can use, uh, for, it doesn't necessarily say anything. It's just a, it's just a fund there that was set up after Irene happened, that could be used for highway, it could be used for unanticipated expenses, at the board's discretion. We did get an email from, we've, we've checked out on a, on a whole host of, um, people from VLCT. I know that Steve Hires weighed in, that, that it doesn't seem to be a good idea to carry this much money, undesignated, in the budget. Uh, a certain amount, I guess, is okay, whatever the board decides that to be. We do have a policy that we got, to us last week, that says that the, the policy doesn't have much enforcement in it. It says recommends. Well, recommends means that you can, that you may or may not. Um, Brandon has developed a list here, um, that he's talked about it a little bit with me. I don't know that that's the right allocation or the wrong allocation of funds, and now it's time for the board to decide, or to question, or to weigh in on what they'd like to see, um, dealing with this. You can read along where we actually, uh, on April 20th, we purchased a cruiser. We used, uh, the balance in the reserve account for the cruiser, but we also agreed to pay $19,750 of, from reserves, and the cruiser was going to cost $35,000. So I'm not sure, oh, from our fund balance, we, we voted to approve $17,000 into, into that purchase, along with draining the balance on the cruiser. So I guess what I would ask the board to consider is, and, and Brandon has done the same thing, about what accounts they would think to distribute some of this money, to avoid any other further tax increases in the future for a couple of years. Um, I guess we could ask about what's in these accounts right now, as far as reserve accounts. I think the police one went down to zero. Um, we do have $60,000 in the, I thought it was combined Martin Hall Memorial Fund, the Capital Maintenance and Improvement Fund. I don't have, although it might be listed here, and I'm just not reading, um, what's left in the balance for the fire accounts. But why don't we take them one by one, if we could, and just ask, let's, let's, just start with police, for instance. Does the board think it's a good idea to allocate any money of this balance into the police reserve for a future cruiser?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
John?
It's okay.
Um, is the amount agreeable at $25,000?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Can you write some of these down, Brandon, and then we can kind of get on with life here, or, or we'll just start checking them off? Uh, um, why don't we go to fire now, because let's take, let's talk off the big ones without trying to keep any money right away. But what is in the, Brandon, maybe you can help me with this. What is in those both reserve accounts now?
Um, so, let's start with, uh, fire apparatus acquisition. Um, right now, there's $59,000 in there. Um, we're proposing to put 40,000 in there. Uh, Scottney will need to purchase a new truck. We've discussed this, uh, Darren and I have discussed this. The cost will be around $225,000. Um, our existing payment is $48,000. I think with $100,000 down, um, it would reduce the, the payment for the next truck to like 16,000 or 17,000, depending on the term of the finance, at 2.5% interest. Um, so we'd save about $30,000 right there, um, just in payments. Um, in firefighting equipment and gear, there's $20,000 remaining. Each, each department spent $15,000 on gear, um, and that was voted on in previous select board meetings. Um, so the, that's in, that's a, at a glance of our firefighting reserves.
And I don't want to get into the notion that we're buying or doing anything yet, okay? That's premature. So I don't want to talk about loan rates, or buying another truck, or anything like that. I'm talking about purely trying to get to a place where we can end up here with, in my view, kind of an equal amount spread amongst every single entity, so that, so that it avoids, maybe not Martin Hall, because they've got 60,000 in there, but it avoids, um, some, well, you've got like a lot more than me type, type of, of things.
Yeah.
I, I know one thing. After dealing with last week's, I've thought about this a lot, and I, and I don't agree with the distribution of, of what this is saying. Um, after last week's knowledge of the highway, and we took all of that money, and we stuck it in reserves, we didn't have any money for tax relief. Um, if I wasn't a board member, I, I would be doing handstands and somersaults on the floor of the town meeting about why we have these kinds of funds above and beyond the annual operating budgets, because I'd been there before I got re-elected, trying to figure out, without reserve articles, because that's a separate issue about funding. When we get a chance to vote on, and when all of us get a chance to vote on reserve articles, these are from the budget. Um, so my suggestion is that we somehow figure out how we can reduce, uh, taxes more to the, more in line of, of a cent, which would be $33,000, and not $2,973. Now, one of the ideas I had in mind was to reduce the $50,000 line that Brandon is proposing to carry over. Um, so that's why I'm talking about it now, when, before we actually vote on a $40,000. I have no problem with the $10,000 firefighting gear, but I'm questioning the amount that's going into the truck fund, because I want to combine my, my, my thoughts, anyway. Now, I may get outvoted, and that's fine. That's America. Did you have a question?
I, I do, on firefighting equipment and gear, is there money in the budget, uh, already to go to those accounts?
Um, no, there's not. So we didn't include those numbers in the budget, because we wanted to keep the tax rate the same. Um, we did last year.
I just wanted to verify that.
I, I saw lines in there for fire gear.
Bless you.
Nope, there's nothing in there for this year. It was for last year. There's, there's a line in there for it, but there's no funding. Um, and that's, if you want to.
Word for it.
If you cut the budget, um, it's, it's towards the back.
On Scottney, or West Weatherfield, or both?
Both. There's, there's no funding for, um, to put into reserves for FY '22 in either
Let's knock off the first one first, because I'm, I'm an agreeable, and maybe I, maybe I was in the minority anyway, on the gear. I have no problem with refunding, or allocating $10,000 of this back into fire gear. Is everybody?
I just wanted to make sure there wasn't money in the budget.
Wasn't, yeah. No, that's a good question, about gear.
Yes.
Is everybody okay with that $10,000 move?
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Okay.
So that one's checked off as well. So now we've used up, um, $35,000.
That's correct.
Of that money. So we're down to, um, if you take away the, the remaining balance, so we, there's $100,000 left. If you look at the last line of the first paragraph, where it says $136,000 is available to discuss, we've just spent $35,000 of that. Okay, so there's 101 left to talk about. What does the rest of the board think? John?
Last year, at the same time, there was a surplus available. I don't remember the exact scenario, but two projects were proposed, and they got mixed. One was fixing the parking lot. The drop catch basin doesn't work. Uh, that needs to be replaced. The paving's in terrible shape, plus it doesn't pitch properly. The other project was the possibility of putting heat pumps in this building, and after the, the, the problems we've had with COVID, that there's a more systemic problem with this building, and that's air quality. Uh, we, we've seen staff go out one after another, because there's no air change. There's absolutely no ventilation in this building whatsoever, other than leaking windows. And I think we owe it to the employees to, uh, it's going to take more than $10,000, to come up with some kind of system designed by a professional, to get some reasonable air exchanges, capture the heat, and put in heat pumps, which can lower our fuel cost eventually.
Well.
I also wanted to mention, too, that there was another proposal, uh, for this building, too. It was to work on electrical, the internet.
I'm sorry, to do what?
Work on the electrical, the internet.
That's right, too.
Everything's two-pronged. There's the grounds, um, you know, the.
I'm about that one.
And then, um, one of my big concerns in this building is security.
There is, we just found out, there is $60,000 in those reserve accounts, too.
What are the, what are they labeled, the, the two accounts? Because one of them was capital improvements, the other one's?
Capital maintenance and improvement.
What's in that one?
$60,000.
60? What's in, what's the other account called?
There's just one combined account.
The sheet we had last week had two accounts.
Yeah, I don't. Yeah, I don't know how the auditors pulled that one off, because we had two specific accounts.
Yeah, and they had different purposes.
They absolutely did. One was for maintaining the building, taking care of general repair-type issues, and the other was for a capital improvement, such as like building a wall, changing a room.
Or possibly internet upgrade, or something.
But I remember Steve saying that they found those minutes somewhere, but this is another case of the auditors made me do it. So, they went back and they looked, but, because I remember him saying to me, I remember that, Dave, you're in on that, and that's fine, that there were two accounts. And there was a breakdown, where the trustees would come with a recommendation, and they would ask us to spend fifteen hundred dollars or two thousand to fix a window, or do some minor thing. And then there was a capital improvement thing, such as a roof, or something. You know what? If it's only one right now, then I believe that the definition of that is open season, that it's either or, and it'll be at our discretion here at this table. That's what I think. So, I don't know how much enough is. I don't know what everybody's thinking. It's on the thing here for eight thousand dollars to be distributed.
Eight thousand and seventy-one.
Huh?
Eight thousand and seventy-one dollars.
Yes.
So my other question was, where did that number come from? That just seems like a weird number. It's not ten.
No idea.
And did you have plans to already have some of this be used for something?
Yeah, this, well, the board hit the nail on the head with what you were just discussing. There's another small project, which is really what we were talking about with this eight thousand dollars, and that's to, due to COVID, and then also due to the sensitivity of information that Suzanne has. We're thinking about building a wall right there, and having plexiglass barriers and so forth. This way, we can lock the door, and all those human resource files that she has, she's been worried about those since the first day I started. I think that would resolve the issue. I think it would cost around eight thousand dollars. I put the seventy-one there, because that was the remainder of the change from the twenty-nine seventy-three, the fifty, twenty-five, forty, and ten, so.
So you have a plan for something already. I'd like to, personally, I'd like to also see a, I mean, at some point, a list of everything that we want to get done, that we've talked about getting done, and actually have some of that prioritized, so that way, you know, when we have money, and when we do that, we can go down through it. But I definitely think security is a big thing.
We don't happen to have an idea, though, when you, I don't know whether you have any knowledge, John, or whatever it would cost to fix the yard out here. That would take an RFP. For the drain.
All these are, all these require a lot more research than what we're going to have available tonight.
Yeah, but if, but if that went on, my point would be, that if that went on to a bigger, a bigger number, then I don't think that that would be necessarily, for me, that wouldn't cover this, to take this allocated surplus, to do it that way.
I've got a suggestion, since there seems to be some confusion, and we're not even sure that the two reserve accounts are, have been segregated properly, that, I know it's a lot of work to try to find the wordage, but if we legally combined those, then we'd have discretion to, one pot of money for Martin Hall, period. Martin Hall and grounds.
Well, I think that there is now, because I, because I know Steve told us that, that there's one account, and there used to be two. But that doesn't solve our situation tonight.
I would, I'll tell you, my opinion is that that account should jump up to ninety, if you want to get these three projects, three or four projects done. And that may not, it'd be enough.
Yeah, if you're talking about paving a parking lot, you're going to need more than that.
But that would drain the reserve account right to nothing.
So, it'd be ninety, just to redo that?
No, by the time you redo all the
All the other projects, yeah.
Paul?
Well, you may have a pecking order.
One last quick question, and this is just because Brandon's past experience. Do you think there's any grants available to do any of this kind of stuff that we just talked about for this building? No, that's not that kind of, because it's a
Yeah, there's nothing. From experience, I mean, the last project I did in Pembroke that was outside of grant funding was a roof project.
Yeah, okay.
And I looked pretty deep, and I couldn't find anything.
Okay.
Mike?
How were these surpluses created? We've seen, we've got a hundred and seventy thousand here, and we have two-hundred-and-eleven thousand in the highway fund. How did that happen?
So, if you want to discuss that, go to page eight.
I would like just a quick summary of how that happened.
Okay. So, last year in FY20, well, we'll talk about, between FY20 and FY21, there was a twenty-three thousand dollar increase in tax revenue. There was a nineteen thousand dollar increase in tax collection revenue. There was a sixty-eight hundred and forty dollar increase in revenue from other sources. And then as we go into expenses, we saved twenty-three fifty in utilities, thirty-five nineteen in legal fees, twelve fifty-eight in insurance, ninety-six sixty-eight in tax collection expenses. We didn't use the line for the attorney to fight our, or not fight our, but to recover delinquent taxes. There's a seven-hundred-and-seventy-four dollar decrease in Martin Memorial Hall expenses, and that's pretty much at a general overview power.
Now, from that overview, is that projected to happen again?
Well, you really can't know if you're going to be able to recover the delinquent taxes or not. You really don't know if pilot revenue is going to come in as projected. Revenue from other sources is pretty, all of these things were taken into consideration when we built this budget. Next year, we'll be able to really do a zero-based budget, where you start at zero for every line, and you build up and figure out the best companies to purchase things through, and so forth. But this year, we did about sixty percent of that, due to the time constraint. But next year, like I said, so, do I think that these, that would be difficult to really be able to say, yes, we're going to make, we're going to have more taxes come in this year than we anticipate? We really don't know.
Well, I'm looking more in a general sense, because it happened over two years, a two-year period, that we saw this, on the highway side, it was ninety-seven thousand and two-hundred-and-eleven thousand in a two-year span. We also know the previous administration had a plan, in fact, an adopted policy, to build the budgets with a thirteen to fifteen percent surplus.
Yep.
And I want to know if anything's been done about that, as we're trying to get to. Are, is this budget going to do that same thing? Which means we're going to end the year, again, with another hundred thousand dollar surplus, or two hundred thousand dollar surplus, whatever, in each of these budgets.
I highly doubt that would take place this year. One of the reasons that we're able to propose the same amount of expenses and the same amount of revenues is because we dug into the revenues and expenses, and fine-tuned each line to the best of our ability, given the amount of time that we had. Next, I think we're going to be running the budget pretty tight this year. I also think that, you know, I don't know if those revenues are going to come in as projected, which would put us in a bad place. That's why I proposed a contingency. However, there is a rainy day fund, so, do I think that we're going to have a surplus? It's possible.
Well, I would personally like to see a surplus. I don't want to end the year in a red.
Yeah.
Myself.
Me neither.
You know, that's, you have to deal with that by law, with your next budget, anyway. So, you know, that's never a good thing. But I don't want to end up with a surplus of four hundred thousand dollars.
No. And, you know, what to do with the surplus, I mean, it's really, it's really a matter of, the reason I divided them up like this is because I knew by making those moves, we would be able to absorb potential increases in the tax rate later on down the road, such as for fire, such as for police, which is what Dave proposed, and I totally agree with. So, I think, when you guys distribute this funding, it'll certainly help.
Yeah, I want to be clear about something I just said, that we have a four hundred thousand dollar surplus, pretty close, three hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. But that did occur over a couple of years, not just one year.
Yes, that's correct. That's a cumulative surplus.
And there are some of the things that factor into that. There are some physicians that came and left, or whatever, some people were here or not here, a manager, administrator, et cetera, et cetera. So there's lots of things that factor into how these things happen, to some degree.
Absolutely.
I do get that.
I want to stay on track here.
I do, too. Now, I'm going to go, I wanted, but I felt those were important. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, well, my proposal is to take, and cut the contingency to thirty thousand dollars. Take twenty thousand from that, put it in the top line, towards the budget. Ten thousand from fire, cut that to thirty. The fire apparatus acquisition, cut that to thirty, that's a penny, that's typical what we would do, is a penny that we would raise. So that would be another ten thousand, we'd move up to that top line. And now I have a question for you, Mr. Chairman, about if we want to assign some of this to an employee, do we need to go into executive session for that?
Yes.
Okay. That, those were, those were the result of my moves, and then from that, that top line, which would then result in approximately thirty-three thousand dollars being up there, I would take money from that, and we can discuss that in the executive session.
So you would take those two, well, but I want to get on with the budget talk here, so I'd really like to figure out what, so you want to move line number one up to what was the total? Totals, let's total them up.
Take twenty thousand out of the existing contingency, move it up. Take ten thousand out of the fire apparatus acquisition, move that all the way to the top, and that's it. So, contingency goes to thirty thousand, fire goes to thirty thousand, and the applied towards the budget would rise by thirty thousand. That thirty thousand would show on that one, the top one.
I'm comfortable with those moves as well.
John?
I'd like to see the contingency go to zero. If you've got a good budget, you don't need a contingency.
I agree.
Oh, okay. And I, and I still maintain that this is an opportunity to get projects done on this building, that we aren't going to have an, this isn't going to happen every year.
I just
I just want to, I just want to say, for the record, our financial consultant recommended a hundred thousand dollar contingency based on COVID-19 and unanticipated revenues. So, moving the contingency to zero, and moving the fund balance to zero, I would definitely say that I wouldn't, I wouldn't agree with that move, because we'd have no contingency in the case revenues didn't come in as projected, and I'm not confident they will, so.
But we do have a hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Yes, everybody's pointed that out, one thirty-eight. Here's what, here's what I would say as a compromise, and a reminder to the board. If we move these funds to the reserve, I'm not sure that we have the ability to take them out of the reserves to spend freely as we want to. Okay? So if this project comes up, John, maybe with an RFP that you're talking about with Martin Hall, we would probably know that there was thirty or forty thousand in the contingency, to let that happen, along with the funds in the Martin Hall reserve, to do it. But I think if it got put in, and the contingency went to zero, which, I'm all for that, too, because that's what budgets are for.
We've never done that before.
No, they're to force the administration to make moves potentially that may be uncomfortable. Not many have money floating around to say, well, that's going to bail me out. They come to the board and say, we've got to do something, because we don't have the money.
Yep.
I don't know what that is, but we've had to do it before.
And we've got a hundred and thirty thousand sitting there for
Undesignated.
Emergencies.
Undesignated.
Or unanticipated.
Yes.
Is the better word.
But, I'm a little, I'm a little bit skeptical of putting it into, like, one of these funds, because you're not going to get it back out. It's going to go into that fund for that purpose. Joey?
So are you suggesting that we take this one thirty-six, and pair it with our one thirty-eight that we already have, and leave it undesigned?
No, because the voters capped it at ten percent of whatever the, whatever the top line is.
You have to leave it undesigned, and then figure out what to do with it through the year.
A certain amount. Not, no, not all of it, because we just used thirty-six. If we broke, if we start, if we kept going along here, and we already knocked off two of them, um
Well, why do we have to? Like you just said, if you, if you want to do it throughout the year, why do we have to move it all right now?
You don't.
We don't have to move it all, but this seems to be, well, we're trying to avoid a special article, like Mike said before. If we, normally, under any other budget year, we would have a penny for fire motor equipment, okay?
Oh, you're right, yeah.
If we don't want to do that, which we just did, we all agreed to put ten into the, to the gear, okay? So that ups that, because Brandon told us, there's already twenty in there, so now there's thirty. That avoids a tax increase. If the motorized one goes in for a penny, I'm okay with that, too, for thirty-three thousand.
Yep.
I'm not, I don't want to get into the discussion about buying a truck now, I don't care about that. I'm talking about having the money in the reserve. I'm okay with that, thirty-three thousand dollars, because that's one penny.
Yep.
Maybe not forty. The truck's going to need a loan, anyway. And even if you thought through the purchase, it's, then it would drain the account right down to zero, really screwing up the next purchase.
Already taken a loan out, anyway, so.
Yes.
Like I said, my, I apologize. My only, my only opinion is, I think, I think eight thousand's really low for this building, there's a lot of stuff.
But just bear in mind, there's sixty in here. So you've got to look at what's in the reserve now. There's sixty thousand in there.
And the contingency could be used
Yeah, okay.
If you left it there, you can use it for anything.
Right. What, John, if you were going to take it to zero, then where are we going to, you'd be up fifty grand?
Well, I said to put thirty into the Martin Hall.
Oh, you want to up, you want to up that by twenty.
And I got to agree, with Paul, we're, what time is it? Seven, twenty minutes of eight already, and we aren't even into the budget.
Oh, I know that. I know that.
And this can be kicked down the road.
Well, that's, yeah.
With the exception, if we want to use part of it for tax reduction.
That's what has to happen tonight.
Yeah, you're right.
There's got to be a number, at least, that says that what Brandon's going to draft tomorrow morning, and circle it around to finish the budget process.
Yep.
What I was trying to do was get to a penny reduction.
Yeah.
Yes.
I came out.
Well, that, taking out one, taking out one penny leaves a hundred and, a hundred and three thousand dollars to be distributed. I, I can't believe that the board wouldn't support that.
Well, we already took ten, and
You took thirty-five. You already took thirty-five.
No, 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 I'm talking about, if we want to move on with the budget process tonight, would the board agree to taking out thirty-three thousand dollars for tax relief?
Yes.
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 Okay. Let's postpone the rest of the decision to another meeting. How's that?
Correct.
Well, we have three on there, then, we've already done.
We just did three. Did you catch what we just did? Okay.
Got it.
All right.
So, are we good with fire apparatus acquisition, firefighting equipment and gear, and police reserves, twenty-five, thirty, three, and ten?
I am.
Okay.
But, but there's also now, around the table, thirty-three thousand dollars for tax relief.
Yep.
So you'll have to add, do the subtraction to that whole, what's left over.
All right, I'll let you guys know what's left over in the next meeting.
Yes. Let's go now to administration, for the FY22 budget for administration.
All right, so if you turn the page to page eight, and the support for these pages is in the smaller binder here, and that's, that's the budget itself. So our administration has reviewed the past five fiscal budgets and others filed, including all of our revenues, expenses, and respective variances. We reviewed this information with our financial consultant, and use a zero-based budgeting approach to draw our totals, and the respective lines within the administration budget for The administration budget accounts for thirty-four percent of expenditures in the general fund, which is comprised of personnel, office, utilities, legal and consulting, grants and fund balance, insurance, contracted services, Martin Memorial Hall, and other town services, eighteen-seventy-nine schoolhouse, and various appropriations. In FY21, we moved forward with a reorganization of our administration. The reorganization consisted of moving resources from the finance budget to the administration budget, and you can see the administration personnel expense overview on page eight. That chart demonstrates what our costs were with admin and finance, compared to what our costs will be in FY22 with admin and finance. So you can, you can see a reduction there. The variance between FY21 and FY22 is thirty-one thousand dollars. Moving on to page nine, another area we reviewed was the office Another area we reviewed was the office expense budget in FY '22. Reductions were made in office supplies, postage, advertising and tuition dues and training. The reason we reduced office expenses is because we made a series of technology improvements at Martin Memorial Hall and we anticipate using less paper and a variety of other things such as mailing select board packets that was budgeted for last year. But, well, for the case of the budgets, I figured it'd be good to have a printed copy. I know. Moving forward to page 10. This is basically a breakdown of our revenues over a five-year period. The left column demonstrates which year we're discussing, what was actually, what was approved and the variance. So you can see between FY '18 and FY '19, there's a $27,000 decrease and so forth. So if you look at these two columns, you can see what's projected, what we're proposing, which is $1,080,411. What was the variance from last year? Zero. So that's basically stating that we're proposing the same tax revenue. Going down to tax collection revenue, we're proposing a $2,782 increase. Pilot revenue, $1,757 increase. Revenue from interest, $116 increase. Revenue from other sources, a $4,789 increase. And then $2,104 in our fund balance decreased to 52,973. Moving on to expenses on page 12. You'll see that personnel expenses increased by 30,594. That's a wash with finance. Office expenses decreased by 11,000. Utilities increased by 2350. Legal fees and consulting decreased by 5,000. Going on to page 13, our fund balance hasn't been taken care of, so I'm going to just kind of set that aside for now. $417 increase in insurance. $3,600 decrease in tax collection, primarily stemming from attorney fees. A $4 increase in contracted services. $9.53 for Martin Memorial Hall. Zero for other town services. A $50 decrease in the 1879 schoolhouse. And a $400 decrease in appropriations for a total variance of 88.15.
Are there any questions so far? These numbers are going to change a little bit because, for instance, the very first number on the first page that we read off, and I can't remember what it on, whether it's page eight or not, it said that the proposed, the tax revenue will be $1,080,000 or something like that. We just voted on a $33,000 reduction in that number alone. So it would be on page 10, very top. So depending on what other decisions are made tonight, that number is going to change. So those are one of the numbers that are going to change for tomorrow morning or whenever we get the warning in line to approve, so.
And I'll reflect those changes in the next meeting.
But as far as the expenses go, that's kind of the important thing to look at for tonight. Not necessarily income, but the expenses on all the, on all these different things.
Make a motion to approve the administrative expense line at $509,357. Oh, wait a minute. Yeah, that's okay.
Expense line?
Yeah.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
The motion been made and seconded to approve the expenses for the administration line item in the budget, $509,357. Any discussion? Now, that's got to do with the office, let me just run down the things. The town manager, right? Principal clerk, Suzanne, that doesn't get into, we've already had the town clerk is separate, so I don't want to do that, right? Nope. Is there anything else, Brandon?
Yeah, so.
Treasurer? Is it, does the treasurer in on this or no?
No, so I can run through those again really quick if you want me to.
Well, just list, just list what we just, for that dollar amount of money, just.
Personnel expenses, like board, town manager, HR, principal clerk, water, recording secretary, FICA, VEMR, section 125 administration, COBRA, employee benefits. Office expenses, which includes office supplies, postage, advertising, computer equipment, office equipment, IT services, website development and so forth. Training, mileage, utilities, telephone wireless, legal fees.
It's okay. You covered it. IT can be a big one, so.
That's about $25,000. Tax collection, contracted services, appropriations.
Okay, appropriations are in there?
Yeah, appropriations are in there.
Those total what? Maybe 20, a little bit more than that, right? 25,000 maybe?
Yeah, more than. Well, 22,000, 22,000 in appropriations.
Okay, but between, and the IT generally is for the whole office, right?
Yes.
Or did you break it down between departments?
Yeah, this is just specifically for the administration, the principal clerk, HR and myself.
Okay, so you, all right. Any other discussion about the, Joey?
I just wanted to again point out what Brandon was talking about. There's only one major variance that I see, and that's on the first personnel line, which is the changes he made this year, which is going to wash in finance.
Right.
Just to air that out.
Yes. Any other discussion? Motion, motion on the table is that we approve 500, scroll them back up here to find it. 509,357 for fiscal '22, '21, '22. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next one up is finance.
So the finance budget accounts for 5% of expenses in the general fund budget. Similar to all budgets within the general fund, the finance department has an increase in expenses relating to the addition of NEMRIC and IT services. These expenses were previously charged to the administration budget in their entirety. By moving this expense across the respective departments that utilize these services, we're able to account for these expenses adequately. As explained in the administration summary, there was a reorganization in our organizational structure that resulted in a personnel change in both the administration and finance budgets. So if we look at our revenues, revenue overview, the finance office will only, will need $37,611 less tax revenue than last year, so we're proposing $74,902. Moving on to personnel, I do want to note that the number that you're seeing for FY '21 includes the previous position, the new position projected for the remainder of FY '21, so that number did change to 71,811, making our variant 17,749. And it's projected at 54,132 for FY '22. Office expenses have increased by $4,947, which is the result of moving NEMRIC and IT services.
I'd like a motion to accept the finance fiscal, finance year 2021, '22 for $74,902. Is there a second?
Expenses and taxes required.
Expenses.
They match.
Yes. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to approve the finance department's expenses for the fiscal year 2021 through 2022 at $74,902. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. And remember now, the income, the revenues have yet to be, they're a little bit off because, you know, we're going to add them all up, but Brandon can take care of that tomorrow. So that's why I'm not getting too worried about what it says on, what it takes to, well, it's $1 off to run it, but.
Admin takes the hit.
You'll figure that out.
Yep.
From, from the top number is the number that's important, that's going to go on the warning. Next one up is listers.
So this is the third pass for the lister's office. When we originally started, the increase for the department was more, and now we've reduced it. Personnel expenses for this department have increased by 16,15. The lister is reorganized. Lister one is proposing to work 11 and a half hours. This is different from the previous meeting and it was updated in the notes section. I know that you guys noted that in the last meeting. Lister two is proposing to work four hours per week. And lister three is proposing to work 29 and a half hours per week. Previously, we discussed benefits, so there is a line in here that says, that talks about benefits. That line will be struck in the final draft of this report. So let's move over to page 19. And again, in this budget, NEMRIC services and IT services were also spread to this department. So we see a tax revenue variance between FY '19 and FY '20. There was a $12,000 increase. Between FY '21 and FY '22, there's a $14,885 increase. Lister's revenue and penalty for late homestead increased by $139. Moving to expense side, the expense side. FY '20 to FY '21, we saw a variance or an increase of 55,10. And we're seeing a variance or increase of 16,15 for what's proposed in FY '22. Office expenses increased by $13,409. In FY '22 and FY '21, there was an increase of 99,42. Again, it's office expenses where you'll see the NEMRIC and IT services fit, but there also is an increase in the town parcel mapping of $6,000. It was taken out of the budget last year, and that's a $3,000 annual bill, so we have to pay 6,000 this year. But then it'll go back down to 3,000 next year. So does anybody have any questions about this budget?
John?
I'm going to make a motion that we approve expenses of $61,096 with $42,235 to be named by taxes. And no, that doesn't line up with the proposal. That's last year's numbers. With no increase.
Can I, can I have that number again? What was the first number?
Fiscal year '21.
61096 with the taxes being reduced by the amount of the increase of 14,885. So it's 57,120 minus 14,885.
So if you look at the top side summary right here, you can see a comparison between FY '21 and FY '22. And that gives the amount that was approved last year versus what's approved this year, the percentage of the budget and the change in the budget. So if you look under the expense side, you'll see under lister 61096 and under lister for FY '22, 76,120. And the same, and the revenues are slightly different at a $139 increase.
Was there a second to the motion? Did everybody understand the motion was? 610096 if I read that right. This kind of print is small.
61096.
Yes.
Not to be raised by taxes, 42,235.
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, the motion been made and seconded to approve the lister budget as noted. Is there discussion?
Yeah, we had several questions at the last meeting. One was involving NEMRIC and the cost that would, where that would set us. There was research on towns, questions from the listers regarding that and questions from the board regarding that, what happened with all that discussion? And all that information.
So I reached out to NEMRIC and we had a little bit of back and forth. It's only been, we had our meeting last, last week, so it's been a few days. And they told me that we'd be meeting at some point this week. I thought we would meet last week, but that didn't take place. So we don't have like a firm, what we have is a ballpark figure of $20,000 to do it. We don't know the finer details. I know the listers have provided an exhaustive list of Vermont laws that are required of that office. So there's no confirmation from NEMRIC that they would take care of all of those laws. So that's basically why they wanted to arrange a meeting to discuss it. But no, we haven't met to discuss it yet.
And did you reach out to any towns that are using NEMRIC and find out how that was going?
I don't know which town other than Cavendish is using NEMRIC. I know that there's a lot of them, but I, there's nothing flagged that says we use NEMRIC. So I don't really know unless NEMRIC tells me. And I don't know if they can tell me because that could be private information.
On your spreadsheet, did we divide it and we updated for you? I don't know if you got a copy of it. Derrisburg does use an assessor. And their assessor last year, this is fiscal year 1920, cost them $62,900 and they still kept their listers. The spreadsheet should have been, I gave it to Brandon and Colivian. You should have it.
Do we have that one?
You can bring it down.
Do you want me to make the copies?
Yeah.
Because it answers all the questions that, a lot of the questions you have.
Did you have the, I have a question. Did you have, at the last meeting, you said, and this, the number that John just proposed included, let me scroll down here to page, page 18. It says that, what's that, Paul?
The mapping.
The what?
The mapping.
No, it says the summary. Okay, I'm talking about hours.
Oh, yeah.
So it says that lister number two is proposed to work four hours a week. So there's 52 weeks in a year, so that's 200 hours. Now, you gave us some information and Suzanne kind of chimed in, maybe it was too many to go, saying that that's, that's really not the case. Do you have a dollar amount associated with those 200 hours? Because if.
200 hours multiplied by $17 an hour and that would give you?
3,405.
Yep.
So what I'm trying to get to the board is that whatever records that you had, and it was disclosed in the last meeting, that that's not what's happening. And I'm not sure why, but there was a history of several years of that happening. So I'm wondering why that should stay in the budget allocated to somebody that's not here doing, putting hours that's going on. I mean, I don't think that we would, I don't think that we would, I think if, I think the manager, if that was going on another line item somewhere where even if it was being used in another, as hours for someone else, it would have been transferred by now.
Yeah, so some of the expenses, I know that we're trying to fund this department at the same cost as last year. But since I spread NEMRIC and IT services across departments, it's going to be an increase. So if we don't, if we don't, if we fund it exactly the same, we're also going to have to absorb that money plus town parcel mapping combined is about $12,000.
Who requires the parcel tax mapping and why was it released last year? Why was it not included last year or I don't know why? So maybe you can help me.
I don't, I don't know.
Is it a requirement by someone?
Yeah, the town parcel mapping one or who's on there?
Dave, this is Carolyn.
Okay, go ahead.
It's got removed last year, unknown to the listers. We have no idea why it was removed.
So is it, is it cause for doubling up or is it, so what does it require? Who requires it and?
Contractual amount, contractual amount with our map maker. We have to pay that every year. And since it didn't get paid last year, it needs to be.
Go ahead, Carolyn. Sorry.
It, since it did not, it was not paid last year, since it wasn't in our budget, it needs to be paid this year.
Okay.
Dave, if I can explain a little further?
Yep.
These maps are used whenever there's a property transfer and we have approximately 145 every year. It's also used when someone brings in a survey of their property more accurately.
accurately draws the property lines. You have to do every year. That's just the way the system works. You can't skip a year or double up a year because you have to have that consistency of showing which parcels went where every year. We don't know why it was removed, just we knew that when we went to do our mapping this year, we went to spend the money to do our mapping and there was no money in that line item. We were not aware it was taken out last year.
So if you were to fund it the same, John, the number would be 52579 if you accounted for town parcel mapping, IT and NEMRIC services.
But, but wouldn't the, wouldn't the first number be higher as well or no?
No, that, basically, since IT and NEMRIC services were spread, it's a wash in the general fund, so we kind of have to include it in this budget. If we don't, I'm gonna have to absorb it in administration or we're gonna have to use the fund balance. So that's, that in my opinion is not a, not an increase, it's a wash. And the, the town parcel mapping wasn't paid last year. We have to double up this year, that's $6,000. It's $10,344 and absolutely necessary expenses. So the number, if you took those two items into consideration, it would be $42,235 in tax revenue from last year plus the $10,344 would equal $52,579.
Did you have a question, Paul?
Yeah, kind of. It was sort of back, and I understand that this is very hard, touchy situation. We're talking about people's salaries and monies and, and all that. I, I just, the question, you, you brought up the fact, and we all did, about the four hours for this one Lister. We have three listers in town. We can't not have any listers or not, or do away with a Lister without having a vote.
Correct.
So, so we have, we have three, but one, it's only like an average through, come out to be $3,600 a year?
Yeah, let me give you an exact.
So, and, and I, I wanted to also go, Lynn, at last meeting, had asked about making sure those hours stayed there in case they needed them or whatever. I don't think there's, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think there's a set hour for this. Like, you can, you can work all the hours you want, right? No? Why not?
We have to stay within our budget. I can work 40 hours a week because that's not what I'm scheduled to work.
Right, you won't get all the money that's like a salary paid. It's no different than...
No, we're not salary. If we don't work, we don't get paid and we use the time clock. So we clock in, we clock out.
Okay, and the town clerk is salary?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, that's, that's the, okay. So this is an hourly thing then?
And the contingency for the four hours is, we have, historically for the past 10 years, I think we went back 10 years, the lister's offices has had, has had a pool of 45 hours to work with every week. We earmark those four hours for Alexis because sometimes she does come in and work when we need her.
Right, right, right.
If for some reason Alexis were decided to get done or one of us not to run and there's a new group of listers that come in, we would repool those, that time. We've never had a disagreement on time. Everyone's always been in agreement of allotment of time. If someone were to come in and say, okay, in order to be a Lister, I need 10 hours. Okay, we'd all reshuffle and it would go back to being, it's earmarking that time.
Yeah. No, I, I totally get that now that I understand with the hours, but I'm still curious, who sets those hours? Who says it's only 45 hours? It's...
That's what has, we've asked for in the budget for the last 10 years.
So it's just based on the salary that, that...
The hours that we feel we need to get the job done correctly. Some years we do it a little better and a little faster than others. Other years, it takes a little longer. It's all?
It's a whole, yes. It's, because it's also hard too. Like, like right now on the ballot, there's a, there's a Lister open for three-year position. But there's no, how do you, what's the definition of what it is and how long you have to commit to and...
A three-year Lister. The theory is, the theory is that every Lister in the state of Vermont has the same booklet. We all have the same, the same training manual. We all have the same guidelines and any Lister should be able to perform all those duties.
Right, but what I'm saying is if I go for this Lister position, let's just say, I guess I'm earmarked at 29 and a half hours, but if I wait and go for the other Lister's position, I only have to work four hours.
No, because after the election, after the election's over...
And you guys just set your day.
And we all sit down and we decide what our hours are that we're gonna be open for the year and what the hour allotments are gonna be and that fluctuates. Carolyn, listen.
Sorry, Joey, Joey had his question.
I like John's idea of going back to the FY21 budget, but I understand where Brandon's coming from, the expenses that we have to cover. Would this be a good place to utilize some of our general fund surplus to make up the difference?
Looking at just like a deficit in the budget.
So what's...
I, I don't know.
What's proposed right now is 57120. What John was saying was to go down to 42235.
How, how did you raise up by $15,000?
By $14,885.
Yeah, how?
So let's go to the expense side.
Well, John didn't do that. He couldn't have, but in that motion or, you know, it's not $6,000 just for mapping.
No, so...
You took the last year's tax need and, or this year, the requested tax need and deducted the, the, excuse me, the column change. So the last two columns minus 26%. 57120 minus 14885.
And what I'm saying is to add $10,344 onto the approved last year to make it 52579. It's already budgeted at 57120 at 14885. So if you account for the necessary expenses of $10,344, it'll be 52579.
Yeah, but you're, you're, you're going beyond the $6,000 tax mapping by quite a shot.
Well, I'm also adding in IT and NEMRIC services, which is 4,000. So if we don't add those expenses in of 4344, then I'm gonna have to absorb them in admin and you'll see it reflected there.
Let me get back to the, let me get back to the 200-hour thing. I want to hear a history of what, what, what work is going on. So you have, you've done the history of what, of what, I understand Paul's question about whoever might want to run for Lister or not want to run for Lister. If there's three of them, that's fine. But I want to learn about the history. So if, if, if anybody in town was allocated to work for four hours and, a week and then was not doing it, I want to know about it because it would give opportunity for somebody to work four hours a week, number one, or number two, it means that we're being disingenuous and that nobody's working four hours a week. So can you tell me the history? You said, said you pulled it up about...
So, so I looked at historical trend data on every employee in town and what their hours were. So in this case, the historical trend data for the Lister that we're discussing at four hours per week was eight hours for this entire year and 30 hours for last year as a, in total. So I think what Lynn's referring it to as a, as a contingency or a bucket of hours to use at their disposal during peak seasons of Lister duties and responsibilities. But we're showing it in the budget as a four-hour job for a Lister that doesn't work 208 hours and hasn't voiced in my...
At $3,500. That's what you told me here five to 10 minutes ago. Somebody floated that number out.
Yeah, so it's, it's $3,640.
So that's left for available labor that's obviously not, not, not being utilized on paper.
Correct.
As a, as, Joey?
So the way I'm understanding this is that we're budgeting for that time, but somebody is working those hours, maybe not necessarily that person.
Or maybe, or maybe not.
Or maybe not, right. But that's what it seems like we're being told. So that's what we have to go with.
Yeah, and I don't know that we'd do that on any other line. We would ask that what the time took to do the job and then we would move that associate, maybe we don't, so where I'm going is maybe we don't need three listers. Maybe we need two workers that are doing it now. I don't know if, if we don't have that. Lynn?
Dave?
Hold, hold it Carolyn. I, I recognize Lynn. Lynn, go ahead.
The money that's not spent by this Lister working, if it's not used by Carolyn and I or Alexis herself, just get, throw back into the general fund this surplus. If, if the event, there will be someday where another Lister comes in, Carolyn keeps reducing her hours, if there's another Lister comes in that wants more hours, not only will I give up some of my hours to make it feasible for someone else to make it a part-time job, but Carolyn wants to reduce her hours more also. But statutorily, we need to keep the third Lister there. That's a statute. We have to have three listers and it's just a whole place as an item.
That, I'm sorry, that's a statute and so the state of Vermont says our, our town has to have three listers?
Carolyn, is that correct? Is it statute or is it?
I believe it is statute, yes.
Yes.
Well, we, we don't know without checking. If people are saying that they don't know, that's a lot different than budgeting. So I've seen some other comparisons to towns where Springfield, for instance, has listers and they pay them a $500 stipend. Now, do I believe they're getting the work done for that? No, but that's what their stipend is. So we could have a Lister as three to fulfill the statutory obligation and have a $500 stipend on the, listen, I'm into saving money on the budget and we need to act that way appropriately. And if we're not, if we're just leaving the money in there just in case a new Lister comes on or in case they need hours, that would be a decision that the listers would go to the manager for mid-year saying, we have more work, and then come to us for a decision beyond the budget, just like any other department. But to sit here and say that we have a history of a, some employee that is earmarked for a certain amount of dollars and hours and then that doesn't happen, that seems to be a bit not budgeting correctly for what's going on. Lynn?
The spreadsheet I just gave you answers a lot of the questions you're asking now and at the previous meetings. We actually called some of these towns and sent them emails to verify that the information is correct. There are some listers that only work two hours a week and there's other listers that are stipend and there's other listers that work in X, work 20 hours a week. Some listers' offices split the, split the hours equally across the board and others don't. It's, the way our office is currently running is the same way that most offices run in the state of Vermont in the Lister's office. And we have nine towns we compare here.
DeForest, can you read back the motion that's on the floor, please?
No, I can't. The numbers have changed.
Well, but John, but, yeah, no, I just want a motion. I want the, I believe the motion was this. So I wrote down the number. Correct me if I'm wrong, John. You put a motion on the floor to accept the Lister's budget for fiscal '21, '22 year at $61,098, of which $42,235 to be raised by taxes, right? Is that the motion that's on the floor?
Actually, it was $96, but yes.
Okay, $96. Okay, so that is the motion that's being discussed right now.
Correct.
That's all I wanted to remind the board of. And then we had a correction from Brandon that added the tax mapping and then the IT costs. So that's not been amended yet. I just want to refresh the board what's on the table for motion. Is there any other discussion on the motion? Lynn?
So Brandon, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
So if you take off the additional tax mapping and you take off the IT services and you take off the, I can't remember the other thing that you allocated to our budget. It wasn't our, the increase that the listers have asked for, if I'm correct, is $88.
Would be $1,615 in personnel expenses. And it would be...
Well, there were some expenses on the office. Just read on page 20.
That's what Brandon's gonna subtract when he...
Yeah, so if you don't take that into effect, the total revenue, including at 60 Lister's revenue, increase in the 42235 for IT and, and NEMRIC plus the town parcel mapping, it would put our total revenue at 62925 and our total expenses. Excuse me. It would put our total revenue at 71579, expenses matching the same.
Because we have absolutely no control over the allocation of NEMRIC services. We had no control over the allocation of IT services. Workman's comp and unemployment that were never charged to our, our Lister's line items before, that was, that's out of our control. The only thing we've asked for is a slight raise. We kept the same amount of hours and we haven't, we increased one other item, but then we lowered another one. I can't remember if it was expense reimbursement. I think we went up to $150, but we decreased trainings at 200. Is that's correct, Brandon?
Yes.
So the only change that we've asked for is a couple hundred dollars that goes against Lister one, two, and three across the board for wages. That's the only thing we've asked for. The others were reallocations from the general fund that we had absolutely no control over.
Did this, did this, I got a question for you Lynn. The sheet that you handed us here, right?
Yes.
There's only one town here that seems to run up the number that's comparable to Weathersfield and that's Ferrisburg.
They have an assessor.
On a, yeah, on a total of $72,000. So is there other expenses on the other towns that are not printed on this sheet?
Arlington is at 33,462.
Well, I get that. I get that. But I'm talking about...
We're at 31,000 and we're at 34,000. They're all similar.
Where did the 34,000 come from?
That's Thetford. This is...
For, for Weathersfield, it says 34781.
Correct.
But I'm showing, on the budget sheet, I'm showing 39974 for FY21.
When, when the board asked all kinds of questions about what we had for salary, I had Suzanne print me off a end-of-year payout for fiscal year 1920. And that was what all three of our salaries came up to the end of the year, right from Suzanne.
But we're showing 45069 under personnel currently.
I don't have, I don't know what you're looking at, Brandon. I haven't seen any of those papers.
Wouldn't it be a little bit better idea if someone was coordinating, if somebody's getting numbers through you, Brandon?
I'm looking at 43455 for what was approved in FY21 for personnel expenses in the Lister's department. What I'm showing here is 34,14858. So that means...
That's for salary.
I know, and that's what I'm looking at under personnel. So what that means is that there would have been a surplus of $10,000 in personnel if that number 34148 is correct. This is the first time I'm hearing this.
Brandon?
Yes.
She can't hear you.
Yes, Carolyn.
Oh, sorry. The, the spreadsheet that we used, the figures from VLCT were for the 1920 year. And so that's why Lynn asked for the 1920 information from Suzanne on what we were paid that year.
Oh, okay. I was, I was doing a comparison between FY21 and what's being proposed in FY22. It just caught me off guard a little bit because...
The most recent information we had from VLCT was 1920.
Any other comments from the board? I sure wish we'd pull the rope the same way. It feels like we're pulling it in opposite directions.
I'll draw the motion if somebody else wants to make a different motion.
Oh, I don't know the answer to that, but it's a little disheartening to, to not have the, the correct numbers on the payout that was, that's lined up with the, with the, with the... that was, that's lined up with the, with the, with the budget number, because it's like $10,000 too high or something, and it's not, it, it, the budget's...
Dave, Dave, the spreadsheet is just to show you how we compared to other towns in the state of similar size.
It's, it's, that's nothing, that's not where I was going. Where I was going was that, that Brandon went from the budgeted year last year, and then apparently $10,000 was not used in the lister that was earmarked to personnel a year ago. And he's just trying to formulate a budget for next year through last year's budgeted item, information that he got.
I'm sorry, I have no idea what you're, what you mean.
So, I, I think what he's saying, Carolyn, um, is I'm showing 34,148.58. And, and this information, um, Lynn just stated, came from Suzanne. And then what I'm showing budgeted, so what was approved in the budget, is 43,455 for FY '21, which is the year that we're in. Um, but then you stated that we're talking about FY '19, FY '20.
Correct.
Um, so now we're going back a couple of years. So, we're seeing that this data, data is aged, and it doesn't match the budget, which shows a surplus.
And it's not matching.
Because the information we got from VLCT is fiscal year 2019, 2020. So, that's the numbers we use from our office is fiscal 19, 2019, 2020, to have an equal comparisons of apples to apples.
I'm not interested in VLCT at the moment. I'm interested in our own numbers, and our own numbers are not accurate. Because...
I haven't seen, we haven't been, we haven't seen any of those spreadsheets.
You went to Suzanne, you didn't go to Brandon. That's, for me, that's...
For payroll, you have to.
That's...
Suzanne does payroll.
Suzanne's not a, not, not, not formulating the budget, Brandon is. Um, did you, there was a motion that's on the table. Um, I, we could have an amendment to the motion or withdraw the motion and have a new one. Either way is acceptable.
Let me explain why I made the motion I did. We, we'd been given information that showed us, for a pretty small town, way up on the list the amount we were spending. And my goal was just to plug in a number so that in the coming year, figure out what's going on with this climate, have a logical discussion, but still leave enough in there to run the department.
And your number will do that, given the information that just came out. That's what I feel. Um, because of the significant underuse or over-budget from a year ago of what Brandon just said.
Yep.
So, there shouldn't be any fear here about, don't have enough money in there, because there is enough money on the motion that you did, with one exception, that you add in the, uh, amount for the tax mapping or the IT funds.
And, and I'll say also that the voters are gonna be voting the general fund, which is one pot of money, and money shifts from here to there so that the end of the year, the books balance. If, if for some unforeseen reason or foreseen reason, the listers go over on their budget, you just look in other areas.
Brandon...
Kind of simple to me, but I realize it's more complicated.
Brandon, what was the number that you, when you added, when, on John's motion, he said 42, 235, but what was the number that was adding $6,000 to the two-year tax mapping and the IT funds?
If you could open up this book to the lister's budget, um, and, and go to FY '22 proposed, go under office expenses, go under FY '22 budget. The column to the right shows the FY '21 to FY '22 change. Um, you'll see a 2298 in NEMRIC services, 4344 in IT services, and 6,000 in town parcel mapping. So, if we just isolate those three expenses, add those three expenses up, which equals 12,642, um, add that in total to the 42, 235, plus the $19,000 in revenue and expense for Act 60 lister's revenue, gives us $73,877 in revenue, and the same in expenses. That doesn't take into consideration, um, the four hours for Alexis, nor does it take into consideration, um, the increase in software agreements, lister tuition and training increases, or reappraisal reserve account increases. But that really can't be controlled there.
Did the board follow along with that?
Sorry, I can slow down a little bit, so it's...
No, I apologize. Enough to know that the number John gave isn't enough to cover what you're talking about. Five, about $12,000, roughly, 10, 10 to 12,000.
Who made the second to the motion? Do you want to pull it back, or do you want to make an amendment? Do you guys want to make an amendment, or, or do you want to just pull it off the table and make a new motion?
Pull it off the table. All of them draw the motion.
Okay, we're back to square one.
Somebody else make a motion.
Do we, do we have a number that's acceptable?
What was it again?
73,877. That adds in NEMRIC, IT...
And 6,000 for mapping.
And 6,000 for mapping, only.
Okay.
Now, that's even more than what you had on the list.
Yeah.
No, it's not.
No, it's not.
No, it's 76.
No, 76,120.
So, if, if, if you want the specific amount to be raised by taxes, it's 42, 235 plus 12,642, which equals 54,877.
Okay, now, I'm gonna go back to something I said, if I may, Mr. Chairman, uh, earlier. And that is, when you look at the NEMRIC and the IT, Lynn is correct. Those are numbers that are moving from the general budget that are just being split up amongst departments. So, there's, these are things that existed and exist a year ago. They're just being broken up and spread out. So, you see them showing up as an increase in a department, but it's not an increase in tax or expense. Because the budget would have been that way anyway if you just left them in a different place.
Yeah. But it allows us to adequately account for the expenses of each department.
So, so the total, the total actual increase in this budget is about $4,600. 1,600 in wages and the 3,000 extra for the delinquency, um, parcel maps last year.
Plus another 3,000 to cover what we'll have to owe next year.
Well, that would be in the budget already.
Yeah, true. You're right.
That didn't count that.
One, one quick question. Brandon, that, that increase in the, the personnel, the 16,015, uh, six, uh, 1,615, how, how much percent is that? Is that a 2% raise?
Um, so what you would have to do to get the percent increase is add 39,974. Here, I'll, I'll do, I'll do it real quick.
I just, I, yeah, I was trying to do it with the hours and the people there, but...
Real quick, my point is a lot of the increase that we're seeing out of 12,000 was in the budget somewhere else.
That's not, that's not their fault.
That's correct. That's exactly.
They gotta pay the mapping and stuff.
Somebody make a motion. I need them.
Uh, Brandon, I know, Brandon's doing some math. He, they had, he, somebody asked him a question about whether it was a, whether that calculation was the same as all the other ones that we've been using. Was that a 2% pay?
Right.
And I don't know the answer.
Um...
I, I know one thing. I just got...
That's a 2.8 point, that's a 2.81% increase. So, it's .8 over.
There seems to be a discrepancy between what is on our sheet right here, acknowledged at pay for the hours put in from last year at 34,781, and there was a budget of $45,000, according to Brandon, that was budgeted. That is, when you asked that question very early on about where does this surplus come from, it's apparent to me that we just learned a little bit. Because in the budget last year, there was $45,000 earmarked, I don't know why, for, for personnel, for listers. And here is the verified amount by Suzanne of 34,781.
It's not the same fiscal...
That's two years old.
The, the Suzanne numbers are current for the, this past...
The Suzanne numbers are fiscal year 1920.
I, I'll get there, Lynn. Let me ask a question, and, and that's correct. Fiscal year 19, and the numbers that we're looking at here, we need to go back to 19, which is 30...
Right, right.
1920, which is 37,9.
$3,000 over.
Yes.
Over-budgeted. Well, you asked a question about where do these, where do all these departments attribute to a surplus that's coming in the general fund? Or the highway, it doesn't matter.
The 3,000, the 3,000 is on the page. It looks almost like they ignored the, the FICA and insurance benefits, which is added into our bottom line. So, if you look at their top, this is lister's 35,093. That actually is pretty close, you know?
Yes.
So, if you look, it, it just seems like the FICA and insurance was left out and, on this spreadsheet for that year.
Yeah, and you just got wages.
I hope not.
Yeah, no, well...
You just got wages only for this one. This one accounts.
They were not charged against our department.
I hope not.
They were taken out of our paychecks, but they weren't put on our line item in our budget.
The information in this spreadsheet is, is accurate information based on approved amounts. I just want to make that clear.
But I, I don't, I don't have, I don't have the exact number here, but I, I'm, I'm fine with it. It, it's not the lister's fault for the maps. They, we, we need to pay the maps. And, and, you know, spreading the NEMRIC and the, and the IT costs, and that makes sense. We, we've, we've talked about trying at least to do a 2% raise with, with groups. I mean, we were talking, weren't we, didn't we talk about that? Am I wrong? Dave just gave me a funny face. I don't know. Was that...
Well, no. We, we're talking about 2% across.
Yeah, yeah.
Period.
Well, so, like I said, I'm, I'm okay with, that's what we were talking about. So, I don't know where the numbers come out to be, but this was a 2.8. I, I'm, 2%, I, I have no problem with doing that. I just don't know what the number comes out to be.
Well, I'm sure that other people would say, this is where you go down a road. I'm sure the highway would have said, why didn't I get 2.8? Because that would matter.
No, that's what I'm saying.
When I listen, when I listen to others, that matters.
Right. That, that's, that's what I was saying. I'm, I'm fine with, I'm fine with the budget probably a little less than, I just don't know the numbers. It's the, right now, the personnel is up, up 2.8 versus just 2.
The number would be 40,800 for personnel at a 2% increase.
Under 22, the, say that again?
40,800. So, if we base it on just a 2% increase in pay, um, it would, the number would be 40,800 for proposed, oh, wait.
As I say, I think it's only 39,974, isn't it?
Okay, so it would go down to...
Yeah, 40,771. That's what I get, just on wages. Just looking at those three wages.
Does that include the, that, that includes all the hours that are scheduled when we read the narrative?
Yes.
Yes.
When you look, well, when you look at this, this sheet right here, and you see the, the, 10, 615, 3, 3640, and 20, 6845, add those up, multiply by 92 point, sorry, 99.2, because it's only a .8, so you multiply by .992, and it drops it to 40,771 from 41,100.
I'm, I'm understanding that part, but when I look over at that, that's not what we're using. That's over-budgeting by what we're actually spending.
I got the numbers. Um, yeah, if we over-budget. I have the numbers if we keep the lister with four hours the same. So, an increase by 719, which would give them the 2% increase. That's $719 increase for the department. So, it'd bring it from 43,455 to 44,350. Um, then we have to add that 719 to the 73,877, which would give us... 74,596 in revenues and expenses.
Say that again? How come it went up?
719 for a 2% increase, if we're gonna do that across the board.
That wasn't factored into the, at the, at the first...
No, the 73,877 didn't factor that in.
Oh.
Nope, there was no, it stayed the same, so... And how much to be raised by taxes was that still the same, the 40...
Yep, 74,596 in revenues and expenses. Um, the amount to be raised by taxes, yes, you're correct, that would also increase by 719. So, it'd be 54,877.
Could you say that again?
54,877.
So, it'd be 55,596 to be raised by taxes.
55,596 to be raised by taxes.
Correct.
All right, then, I'm gonna make a motion that we have, uh, the other one's been removed, correct?
Yes.
Then I'm gonna make a motion that we accept a lister's, um, budget with 74,596 dollars in expenses to be, and 55,596 to be raised by taxes. That'll cover the NEMRIC, that'll cover the mapping, that'll cover a 2% increase in raise.
And IT.
And, and IT, and it'll keep the 45 hours that they need.
What was the number used on, on taxes?
55,000, 55,596 dollars. And those were the numbers that I got from Brandon, so I'm just saying, I didn't calculate those.
Motion been made and seconded with the budget numbers as noted. What was the top number, 74, what?
596.
596, of which 55,596 is the amount to be raised by taxes. Any other discussion?
We need to take a serious look at this before this time next year. That's all.
Is there any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Any opposed? Let's go to, uh, West Side Fire. The juice is done. Police is done.
Uh, West Weathersfield?
Yes.
Okay.
Is, is anybody online? Are we all, can you hear me? Anybody on the fire departments? Anybody on?
There he is. He just...
Yes, up here.
Okay, good. You can hear us, okay?
Yes.
Thanks. Okay, Brandon, go ahead. Can you lead us into this?
Okay, so, uh, first, I want to make it clear that historically, we had a consolidated budget for both departments together. Within that consolidated budget was expenses that were budgeted for by the town, and then there was an allocation for each department. From that allocation, they spent the money and budgeted for it as a department. So, we were showing $27,000, and that's what we showed. Under the new contract, we've broken the fire department budgets out into two budgets, and then we've accounted for the line items of the allocation. Does that make sense? The 27,000 is now allocated out how they've spent it over the past five years.
We'll see where it is.
We've absorbed those line items into these budgets, revenues and expenses. Um, so everything is accounted for. We know the flow of revenues and the expenses for each department. So, the comparison that you're seeing in these budgets is slightly different than what you've seen before because it's showing more expenses and it's showing more revenues. Um, I've given you a chart that breaks out the differences. So, uh, we'll get to that chart after. I'll first read the summary. I'll go through the revenues and the expenses, and then we'll talk about the changes and what the differences are and so forth. So, as it stands, the West Weathersfield Volunteer Fire Department is proposing a $2,905 increase in revenue to operate in FY '22. If we go over to page 28, we'll see... If we go over to page twenty-eight, we'll see, um, a two thousand nine hundred and five dollar increase based on the tax revenue, um, for this department in FY twenty-one. There's a fifteen thousand dollar decrease in other revenue. Moving to page twenty-nine, there's a seven thousand fifty-nine dollar increase in personnel.
Wait a minute, before you move, is the first line required for tax revenue is in that somewhere, uh, a truck payment or not?
Yes.
Okay, good.
And, but, we'll get to that in the, on the expense side.
But it doesn't, but it doesn't break it down. So, so it looks heavy, but how much of that truck payment was that? Was it like forty-seven?
Forty-eight thousand.
Okay, good. Everybody catch that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good.
So yes, that's, that's absolutely an important note. Um, and, and going on to the expense side, we'll see it. Um, office expenses are thirteen fifty-eight, um, more than last year. Fourteen fifty-eight more in utilities, six hundred and three more in insurance, fourteen twenty-seven more in building and grounds, thirteen forty-eight in communications, five thousand forty-eight in fire equipment, um, an eleven hundred and forty-five dollar decrease in debt service, which is the result of a lower interest for the, um, fire truck. And that payment, that payment is forty-five thousand eight hundred. The interest payment is eleven forty-five. The interest payment was twenty-two ninety last year, which equals a eleven forty-five variance. Highway and fuel service increased by seven fifty, reserve transfers decreased by fifteen thousand. Going over to the West Weathersfield Fire Department FY twenty-one versus FY twenty-two budget, the chart right here. Looking in that chart, um, between FY twenty-one and FY twenty-two, expenses, um, budgeted town expenses decreased by ninety-four twenty-two, department expenses increased by twelve-three twenty-seven. Um, differences is a forty-one eighty-eight shortfall in FY twenty-one if no outside revenue is provided, and there's a sixteen thousand five hundred and fifteen dollar shortfall in FY twenty-two if the allocation remains the same.
Any questions? Is this the last payment on the truck?
Yes.
FY twenty-two?
It is.
Can somebody explain the seven thousand dollar increase in personnel?
Where are you?
First page of the budget. Uh, Josh?
That.
Okay.
That line item, we have a office administration for fifty-two, five thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. We have fire warrants type in. We have.
I, 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 I. Mr. Chairman, I can read the lines. I want an explanation of them.
Hold on. What, where are you, where you, where are you reading?
I, Mr. Chairman, I'm reading the line items that make up that seven thousand.
So if you look at the actual budget document itself, and you go to West Weathersfield, um, and you look under personnel, what Josh is pointing out is that, um, last year, office administration was seven fifty, this year it's fifty-two fifty. He moved on to saying fire warden stipends, um, and other various expenses that make up that personnel, um, that personnel number.
But I can see that, and that's not what the question is. Question is, what, what is changing that results in a forty-five hundred dollar increase in office administration?
What's that line item entail?
That's what I, yes, what's in the, yes, what is that?
Is it payroll?
I don't know. That's what I'm asking.
Mr. Chair, I'll answer that.
Yeah, go ahead.
Office, office administrator for the fifty-two, uh, the forty-five hundred dollar difference, though the officer, the department had put in there, um, some small stipends for the line officers for their yearly work that they do. That is what the increase is.
There any questions?
I thought it was a volunteer fire department. Sounds like they're paying employees. Are both departments doing this?
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead, Paul.
I'm sorry, Josh, this is Paul. How are you?
Good to do so.
Good. I was just curious, um, the, uh, the office administration, what, what are the roles and responsibilities that person does, uh, that they will perform?
The officer roles, the chief, the deputy chief, the daily roles of what we're doing currently.
So that's more than one person then, right? Is what you're saying, the office administration?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Correct.
So you're paying the officers and stuff. I got you.
Personnel, personnel, uh, personnel to enter, uh, as may needed for members reporting for fire reports. So yes, that, that's multiple, multiple roles.
Yep.
Of small stipends, um, for their, for that, for those services.
Thank you.
Before you go, I want to make this comment, Joe. I don't know. I'm getting an education this year, and I'm getting an education in a good way. I've been in both stations when both sets of people have showed up at different times, and they tend to be common. They te, they tend to be the same people in both fire departments that show up frequently. There's a few that show up after events start or, or try to, I'm not sure, I want to pick my words carefully, but I've learned, but I don't, but, but this isn't the time to do it, and I don't know how to do it. I've learned that they have earned something that I've watched, um, but I don't know how to go about that reimbursement. And I'd like more information before it just gets thrown at us like this. Because I don't know the ramifications of doing it. I don't know what, what it entitles for jeopardizing their, their, uh, whatever their nonprofit status is or not, or how it implicates the town in doing it. Um, but the fact of the matter is, this is a bit different than paying, for instance, at the last proposal that went around, a really lot of money for one person just to go around and tell everybody else what to do and when to do it. These are the people that actually show up and do something. So, so having said all that, I'm not prepared to just throw a certain amount of money at whatever line officers are, but I am interested in listening and learning whether or not, what other departments do, or on-call, or some sort of a system that we could forge our way into. Now, did you have a comment?
I was curious how, how we got to that number exactly.
I don't know. Did you, was there any, was there any, like, reason for that, Josh, or how did you, how did you come up with something?
Well, there's board members that are sitting on this board right now, um, that we had made a proposal last year, and, um, when we, uh, when we came into fire discussion, um, there, you guys had not even considered, reviewed, talked about our proposal. That talks about the exact thing of what we have in here. And moved on with just allowing, um, okaying the, the flat of, uh, keeping it, keeping it the same amount in the allocation amount like it has been every year. Um, there, the difference is also, you guys don't forget that, um, you, we are assigned, we are two separate entities, uh, with the contracts with the town. Uh, this is services that the department felt, uh, to give some stipend to the line officers for the daily duties that they do. And that we are, no, we are not a municipal department that you guys have chosen not to, um, to consider or to, to take a move forward with. Um, so to take and come up with those numbers, uh, the, the membership and the officers had, had came up with those numbers on which personnel is receiving those funds for the duty that they're doing.
So you, you guys came up with that. I'm not sure whether you heard what I had to say, but, um,
So, uh, again, we have, we have our own budget that every year, it don't matter if it's sixty thousand dollars that we, we, both departments that we come to you guys to take in, or that we're, we're proposing. Um, you guys have always, um, more or less kind of picked the number, um, and approved that number, um, regardless of, of the difference in there. Uh, this is, we, obviously, we're doing it different this year with having all the numbers, uh, on, on town paper. Um, that's, that's breaking out every category of where all the money is going. Uh, so these, all these numbers were, were discussed, um, in a couple meetings with Brandon and reviewed with Brandon on each of these line items.
Has this been done before, or is this the first year for this?
First year for what?
For, 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 well, I know, and you know what, I really appreciate it because I've seen the other, uh, 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 information, uh, from Ascotney and from you guys. This is where it needs to get to, to get to a stage of having the town be more of a financial partner. You've heard us say, and I, I believe it, that, that, well, you just heard me, I hope you heard me say what, what I said about three or four minutes ago, where I've learned a bunch about who shows up when and who's consistent, um, and who frankly has earned some, some, some type of, uh, listening about, exactly, and support about what you do and what you don't do. Having said that, it, has this been done before and the town not be aware of it? Have you paid officers before or not? So you're just asking for it to come out with the town paying for something that it's earned?
In, in previous, it's been paid out with either hazmat money or fundraising money.
Okay.
For, for, for one single, for the chief, for a chief stipend.
But, but not for officers?
No.
Okay. John?
I, I will say that the Ascotneys got a line item that's similar. There says payroll, and it's five thousand seven hundred and ninety-five, and that's a brand new line. The, the, the thing I find, that's, that's.
That's an air flight.
That's, that's nineteen, and it's gone. I'm sorry.
And, and, and by the way, that was FICA and all kinds of, like, state things required. Barb and I talked about this already, and it went away. Um, and it's, it's really obsolete in the budget, so I can actually strike that line in, in Ascotney's budget.
Which one? I'm sorry.
Um, in Ascotney's budget, under, and I totally would have taken it out already. I just, I dropped the ball on that line item.
Personnel payroll?
Yeah, go into personnel payroll. That can be stricken.
Did you have a question, Joe? Or no? Who, who wanted to go? No.
Paul, go ahead.
It doesn't affect any of the numbers.
Paul, go ahead.
Yeah, no, and, and I, Josh, to the same point, I think some of these other numbers you might have absorbed before that we didn't see or the town didn't see, but like, um, like on here, you've got fire ground, food and supplies for seven hundred. That's just to keep your station, you know, stocked up with, with food and stuff while you're there, right? Water and things?
It is, that is consistent of, yeah, it's a, a water trough in here for the trucks specification. Um, if we do trainings.
Right, car having that stuff, right, yeah.
Again, all you guys have always saw was just the twenty-seven thousand or whatever your allocation amount that this is. These, uh, these are our budget numbers, our, our budget that's now line by line in, in what Brandon has come up with.
Team building morale is on there for thirteen fifty. You guys must go out and do something then for that, or?
We tried to take and do, uh, either a small holiday thing in, for, for Christmas and then, uh, something else in the summer, uh, for, uh, just for, thank you.
John?
What, what I can see here, I'm, I'm trying to, is anybody taking the time to compare the two different fire departments and their budgets? Because there's some, there's some things that aren't very consistent between the two. Um, Ascotney is showing their, um, hats off. They're showing their, their fundraising as revenue. There's no revenue line on West Weathersfield, and West Weathersfield's budget is thirteen thousand five hundred and forty-five dollars higher than Ascotney, and, and, I don't know. There's just things that are, they don't seem to be apples and apples between the two budgets.
Well, one of the, and that's why I asked early on, so in the budget, uh, Brandon, is the truck payment part of that budget? As a total overall?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so that throws it off.
I backed that out.
Oh, you backed that out when you just said what you said?
Yes.
Okay. So you already backed it out? Okay. Paul?
So this is going to sound weird to ask this question, but are, so are we, are we trying to take both fire departments and treat them as equal, or are we?
If we don't, it's going to create hate, more hate and discontent. My estimation, only.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
That's, that's kind, that's what you guys have kind of always been. Uh, I, I can say that, uh, at least for our, ourselves and, um, for our budget that we create every year is, is obviously higher than what the allocation amount has always been. Um, obviously, the last seven years, we've been coming to you because it's been stated that we have to continue doing fundraising to pay for the expenses to operate the department. We backed off on those fundraisings. Uh, so we, for ours, no, there is no revenue for fundraising that's in there, uh, for, for our, our budget stuff. Uh, what we, especially this year, obviously with COVID, but we already stated that we've been backing off to take in, uh, less than the time needed for, for the members to participate on that.
I'm, you know, you've heard me say for two or three years in a row, Josh, that I've, and now this last year, I've stood in the, in the, it's, I've stood in your garage a couple of times, and, and, um, I feel very comfortable going before the voters telling people that, that you shouldn't be spending time out in the middle of the road looking for money or, or, uh, or even having yard sales or anything. It, it should be the burden of the town to, to support your activity to a certain degree, and you've got to, you've got to be able to justify that with the line items about, about what you're spending on. I'm, at this particular moment, I'm not prepared because I haven't had a talk with Brandon or, or Steve Hyer, or, or maybe Town Council about doling out a, a, an appropriation of ten thousand seven hundred dollars for what would be obviously perceived as a payroll. That, I, I would need to check on that. Um, it's not a fact that anybody doesn't earn some money doing it, but I don't know what that, I don't know how that allocation would be, and it might be allowed. I'm not really sure. I, I don't have the answer to that. So that would be concerning to me. Paul?
I'm making a motion that we extend the meeting.
Yes.
Thirty, thirty minutes?
Yes.
Thirty minutes.
No more.
All those, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Do you have a question?
I agree with you on that, on the, um, payroll aspect. I, I've got an issue with that, but I believe last year's budget, we set it at a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars for both departments. That was everything.
That was the truck payment, that was everything.
Except we added a penny to a reserve account, which turned another thirty-three, and that went to the voters, I think, for vote. And it passed, so that totaled two hundred and seven thousand. If I add up what's, what's here. If I add up what's, what's here, and I, I had done the same thing you did, I backed out the truck and I did that in two numbers, that's 40, 45, 800 and 1145. Both of those come out on that truck, correct? You gotta go into the budget to do it, but, but in doing that, these two budgets add up to 196,964,000 as written, which is less, it's almost $10,000 less than last year. Is that correct, Brandon? That work for you?
Yep.
Did you give up on that?
No. So, but, but isn't the truck payment included in the budget? It has to be.
Yeah, it is. At, at the 196,964, the, the truck payment's in there. And last year, we spent 207,000. This year, it would be 196,964.
How, how would it be that much less?
Because.
We, because we use, we put 100, we, we had 174,000 and we put 33 in a reserve account. Those were the two things associated with fire departments.
But the, but the 174,000 was, was the operating for the annual budget. It didn't include the 33,000 separate article. That was an add-on after.
Yeah, that's correct.
That, that's correct, but I added that in because that was our fire department budget. Those two numbers add up for the fire department.
Okay.
Is there, is there, is there funding in here for, for equipment reserves, any kind?
No.
No, that was a separate article.
And we just plunked a whole bunch.
Did you, did you, I don't know, Josh, I, I don't know if you and Darren are on or, I don't know who's on from the fire departments, but earlier we, we voted to take out of the surplus 33,000 to put into the fire department wheel fund and an additional 10,000 to be put into the fire department, um, equipment fund. So we did that without, without needing a vote, we just voted on it to take it out of the, the general fund surplus.
And, and that's not included in their budget this year.
Right, that's above and beyond whatever's gonna happen.
Right.
Wait, where'd you get that number?
Which one?
Two, two, no, that big number.
The 207? 174 plus a penny that we put in reserves.
My answer is total for this year.
Total for this year is, from the, from the top of the two budget.
Okay.
Here, I use, I use the fire department tax need is what I used. That, because that's what I'm dealing, what are we raising for taxes compared to what we did last year? And last year was, actually, last year, we set the budget 174,000. I don't know if that was the, the tax.
Yeah, I think the summary sheet is, something isn't driving because it shows last year 201, 494 with the truck payment, probably without that special article.
Yes, you're right.
Are you preparing to make a budget? I know we haven't jumped into the Ascotney, but are you preparing to make a budget for the total? I'd listen to one because it's five after nine and I, I've seen no reason to keep questioning all of this to death, but, and I know Ascotney's not on the table, but it is kind of because it's been presented here in paper form, it's gone through Brandon, it's gone through both chiefs, it's, it's gone through the line item process. Are you prepared, or is anybody prepared to make a motion with a total amount? And you could just make that motion as the total amount of the budgeted fire department services with each two divisions noted for the total dollar amount?
I'm, I'm, I'm not because I, I agree with you, I have a problem with the.
Well, you could, you could, you could take that out temporarily. I, I, Joey.
Yeah, that, the pay stipend thing, it's either gonna go on both or it's gonna come off both.
Well, I, and I don't know this, see, I haven't looked and maybe you guys have because I'm, I get too busy wound up trying to listen or hear people that are talking or not, is.
Darren's on and asking why.
Maybe it would be, maybe it would be appropriate to have whatever a stipend for both chiefs separately. I think we might be able to all agree with that, it's a certain amount. Who picked that dollar amount? I don't know what it is. But I do think that the officer thing, for me anyway, opens up a door that I would be happy to investigate and to learn from, but, but I don't, I don't know what it means overall with taxes or payroll or some kind of a, a, a road that goes down. I just don't know enough about it. We do pay a stipend to the, to the fire warden. There's one allocated for emergency management at $300. Our own board here gets $500. So it's not unheard of and we're not considered employees in that event.
We get a double.
Oh yeah, we get the, we get the taxes taken out. Yeah, yeah. Sorry. Yeah, we do.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead, Josh.
I just would like to point out, when you guys talk about the, the two different trying to keep the budgets or keep the money the same for the departments, keep in mind, you guys are dealing with two separate organizations with two separate contracts with budgets. We're, we're not gonna have the same budget line items. If you guys want to do that and achieve that, then you know what the step is to take and make that be that the same across the board for fire service.
Yeah, but what I was saying is we have the paperwork in front of us with the two departments right now. So we have, we have all the line items that are associated with the different amounts that are tucked in there and the lines may be different, but we have the presentation in written form in front of us. So I, I don't know if somebody here wants to think about the total dollar amount and then back out that little bit and then adopt the budgets as presented, or we want further discussion? How, how does the board want to handle it?
Michael, please explain where you get your numbers.
I, I took, I, I, yeah, they, they might not add up though, I apologize. I took the 128,684.
Okay, I see that.
And I, what I did was I backed out 48,000 because I think I had heard that was what the truck payment was. I think that's the one you had. Cause it's 48. Yeah, yes, exactly. That, that's right. I think it was Dave that just, he was just shooting off the top of his head, which, which is fine. And I, I used that and I subtracted that, but that's not correct. And then when I put it back in, I put it in as what it actually is, so that would have thrown those numbers off. Did that make sense, John?
It does, but what was the number, your total number? Two, it said 290 something.
No, 190. I was one, I was 196,964, but that would be low by.
Okay, okay.
But the total, when you look at the total expenses as presented on all of this, whether it's on your iPad or whether it's on this or not, it's two, for the, for the FY22, including the truck payment.
Yes.
It's 214681.
Yes. That's correct.
Okay. As opposed to, um, whatever you said was last year's, including.
If you look at last year's in the same place, it's 201,494.
Okay. Okay.
About 13,100.
Yeah, okay, so.
Fire services.
You do what?
I'm looking for him to make a motion.
Oh, well, if you, if you back, if you want to get it right the first time without an amendment, then I would, I would temporarily, well, I would ask a question. Darren, are you on? Or?
I'm here.
Darren, yeah, he's there.
Okay. Okay, if we, if we have, if we look at, let's jump ahead on the agenda that we're gonna combine these and try to get them done together. Given the line items, if you move ahead to page 34 on your iPad, which is personnel, it's saying that FY22 is allowing a 2,565 personnel FY22, which is what somebody asked a few minutes ago, expense. And if you look at, if you look at page, so write that down, 2565, if you want to be, if you want to be somewhere.
Where are you getting the 2565?
If you look at page 34.
Yep.
Top of the page, personnel, okay? So somebody said earlier, okay, what are you, what are we gonna like have for a chief stipend or however you wanna, whatever words you want to use for, for personnel, okay? If you, if you, if you're interested in keeping something equal, then the other proposal is 10,728, okay? There's the difference between, we're getting the majority of the difference between the top budget number of 214,681. If we can somehow compromise those two numbers together and come up with an average, I think we might have this fixed fairly quickly.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
On my, my budget under personnel, you're using 10,728?
Yes.
If you guys are talking about the stipend, then you need to take and go up to my line item of office administrative and there's 5250. The remaining amount in those, uh, money is the other categories that do not pertain to any type of stipend to personnel.
Correct.
If you're trying, if you're trying to take and compare with, with asking Ascotney for, for this comparison.
And Josh is correct with that, so it'd be 5250, but then there's nothing for, for Ascotney, so, um, so it's just, we're really just looking at the 5250 number because there is no payroll on Ascotney.
Correct.
Mr. Chair, I'll even give you that breakdown. Chief stipend of that 5250 is 3,000. The deputy chief's stipend 1,500. 750 is for the administrative for NIMFers entering and paperwork. That's what makes up 5250.
Okay. Go.
Should we apply the same to Ascotney?
Well, well, the answer, the short answer would be yes. The long answer for me is, I don't have any idea. I'm gonna fall back on the same one I gave five minutes ago about if this ends up, ends up being more than payroll after you happen to give the chief a stipend. I believe the chief may fall into the category of what we do, but, but the minute you start having multiple sources of distribution, I think that changes for me.
Well, we, we, at that point, don't, we're paying.
Yeah, that's.
That's right.
We're in our, then we're paying a municipal.
Payroll.
And then the other guys are gonna want to be paid too, once it trickles out.
On call. That's exactly right. So I'm not, I'm not saying to do that. I'm just saying that that's the reason why I kind of put the break on that.
I feel we should do away with the 5250 and leave the rest the same.
If you do, then you can subtract that out of the 214681. Because I'm looking at the total fire budgets of both departments for FY22. And then you can note where you're pulling it out of in a motion.
And Ascotney does have a stipend for the chief and president. Not that they don't earn it, because they do, but.
Yeah, Chair.
What, how much is it, John? How much is it?
I'm not there yet.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
So I, I, we, we can call it whatever we want. At the end of the day, it's costing the members that show up all the time a very significant amount of money to, to do what they do. So whether you want to call it a stipend, a reimbursement, payroll, whatever, I think it's time, we, we came up last, we come up before, the departments have paid out monies before to officers on both sides of town to try to reimburse for some of these expenses. It, it's time that we have a serious conversation about it and move forward in a direction of at least making it cost less for these members. So to just take that again, after we had that problem last year, it's, it's somewhat disheartening and I, I appreciate your words, Dave, earlier with, with seeing out same people every time, but to that point, it costs a lot of money for these guys to do this, both chiefs and anybody involved in any significant portion to, to do it. It's expensive.
I get that.
209,611.
But there's a difference between who's paying. That's to me, and I'd like to find out what that means.
On, on the Ascotney side, it's 1,400 for the chief's stipend and 600 for the president's stipend. They, they have a slightly different structure there.
You know, and Darren drives a truck to every event, or almost every event, so I mean, it, I'm not saying any of this isn't justified.
No, I'm not either. I, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to make it equal.
Yeah.
Agreed.
It's, it's not even, I'm sorry, it's not even all about equal too. I mean, that, that's fine and I have no problem with that, but, so I think what Dave's getting at is at what point does it get to, to, to say, listen, somebody comes in here and looks and does an audit or something, say, listen, you're paying like, you're paying six, eight firefighters for your town here, but where does that?
Well, but there, there are structures.
I'm sorry, and to Josh's point, yeah, you can call it whatever you want. And that's fine when we're just sitting here by the water cooler, but in reality, what you call it is a legal definition of what it is and it can be held up that way. So I, I get you and me sitting here going, oh, it's a stipend, it's a paycheck, it's this, it's whatever, but legally, it is, how you define it does justify what it is.
It must be a stipend.
Okay, so, so then it's, then, then it's a stipend, then it's not, you know, you can't call it anything else.
But it, but it will go through Steve Hyer and it will get taxes taken out. It's worth noting.
Absolutely.
Because ours, the same way, they will require a social security number, they will require an ID and so forth.
I think we're all in agreement that it's okay.
And I, I think those stipends being paid for the town allows for it. It's different if, if, if the Ascotney, or, or the West Weathersfield Fire Department is making money and then, then it would be a for-profit. Where a sense is being split and they're being paid stipends to perform their duties, I think it's, I believe it's illegal.
Yeah, and that's, I think that was where Dave was going with the question.
Yes, our auditors see that we're passing through fundraising money. That's gonna.
Flower sale? You guys had a flower sale?
And by the way, that's not gonna flow through our accounting system. They're gonna show me their books and I'm gonna account for it, but it's not actually gonna come through our, the fundraising money isn't gonna be received and, and go through our accounts.
Is somebody doing some math here and some?
My guess. My guess.
I'll, I'll, I'll give you what, what I'm gonna have here in two seconds.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, I would, would really strongly recommend if you guys do take, take, cut out the stipend part, that you duly made 750 in, in my office administrative. That, that is what we've had in the year for the last several years for, for the, for personnel or for the person to take into the news reports. And that's we, we've been, the department, normally how it's been, been handled, the department has, within your checkout to death member, and then we would, we would ask for the allocation or put that request in, into the town for it to come out of the allocation.
Mike.
All right, let me go to Josh for just a question, a quick question. I was gonna propose changing that line item from office administration to chief stipend. You, you would prefer to keep it as just office administration?
I mean, yeah, they don't, officers, according to our body laws, the secretary, treasurer, those are all officers of, of our department. So it, it doesn't matter if it's office administrative for line officers.
But what I was gonna do was put 1,400 there, which matches the chief's stipend on the Ascotney side. So I was gonna change it to chief's stipend, just like it is on the Ascotney side.
Call it officers.
Well, that's why I was asking him, if he wants to just keep it office administration and put 1,400 there, I, I don't care.
Plus 750 for, it's an expense that they've had for a very long time and that's to cover administrative support.
Okay, so add 750?
Yep.
Okay.
I think instead of adding, you just subtract, subtract this.
So now I have a number.
Okay, go ahead.
The first, and this is, this is only the fiscal 22 budget number.
Okay, go ahead.
And that would, and that would, that would be 2150 in that line. By my calculations, and that would give us on, on, on this front sheet where you have 214, 681, that would become 211, 581.
Where's the truck payment gonna go?
It's in that.
It's in that. It's already in that.
It's already in that.
Cause it's, it's in there.
Okay.
It's in their first number. It's in their budget already.
What was the number you just said?
211-581.
Yes.
Sorry, DeForest.
The tax need would decrease to 125-584.
584?
Yep.
125-584?
Yep.
Okay, so I'll make a motion for that. That's the entire, that's both departments. That's the total for both departments.
That's the total for West Wethersfield, 125-584.
211-581.
Oh, I see what you're getting at. You're just making a motion for both departments.
For everything, right. Okay, so if you, if you changed, we didn't change anything on escutney. So what's the tax need on the escutney side? 69 something? Is that right?
69-335.
69-335. So the 211-581 stays the same. 125-584 plus 69-335. 69-335 equals 194,919 to be raised by taxes.
No.
194,939.
939?
Yep.
Whoops, I missed the number one. Sorry.
No problem.
Thank you.
What were the two numbers, 125-584?
Plus 69-355.
Oh, and that's where I got my.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So that's raised by taxes. And, and total expense, right, or budget? So did you get that motion okay? Motion for 211-581 budget?
Of which?
Of which 194,939 is raised by taxes. And just so everybody knows, that did cut that line on the Wethersfield side down to 2150.
Thirty-one hundred dollar decrease.
Yes. That's the only change.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. The motion.
I have a question.
Yep, go ahead. Well, wait, hold it. I just wanna get the motion on the table, right?
Okay. I thought it was second.
The motion is that we approve the fire services budgets for both departments with the noted line allocations here that's presented before us on these sheets. So it's not a bunch of mixed up stuff. It's all presented right here in front of us for line item by line item. For 211,581 dollars, of which 194,939 dollars is to be raised by taxes. Now, I hope everybody heard me when I also said that previously we allocated $33,000 for the fire wheel fund and $10,000 for fire gear fund out of the surplus. So that, they won't, there won't be a need for special articles. Those are already done right now. Is there any discussion? Josh, go ahead.
How far in advance do these discussions have to have? Because it seems like every year we can have a budget discussion, and it comes down to literally this meeting, that these things occur, and more questions get raised and so forth. And then we're back to the next year, and the same thing happens.
I take note of your question. I do think, I do think that we're actually, the disclosure that you guys made, and I do think that both departments did a really good job of doing that. And as far as time spent with volunteers coming in, I think, like in the past, the fire budget's been 174,000 dollars, give or take a little bit. It's raised significantly right now. And we are acknowledging the fact that the volunteers, I don't feel the need to be fundraising. I think some of that's been displaced by increasing the budgets noted, including a significant amount for gear, actually a monumental amount for gear alone over the last couple of years. So I do think we're advancing. I don't think we're not doing nothing. Mike.
Josh, I couldn't agree more. And I think I said last year that I wanted to start the budget discussions way earlier, like September, October. But, you know, get started on it, get going, because it just, it always takes so much time. And this is just it. We end up with these conversations at the last minute. Well, we don't have time. It's always something at the last minute. Healthcare, two months ago, and all this. And I wanna say one other thing, and that is, I know we took that money out. I didn't propose that because I don't think anybody doesn't deserve it. I did it based on the discussion from the board, that there may be some legal issues that we have to be careful of right now. So we can, we can cross that bridge and have those conversations, and the sooner the better. We can get through budget season and move into those discussions. Let's start sitting down and talking about it.
I believe this, this budget is significantly better than previous budgets. And I think it does a good job at advancing the departments. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Is there any other discussion on the motion? Yes, Paul?
I just wanted, I wanted to make sure Darren was able to hear all this. And I know he's on. I just wanted to make sure. I hadn't heard a lot from him, so.
We technically didn't go into the escutney one. We kinda, that kinda came right into the whole beam.
I wanted to make sure that, you know, Chief Spalding's had, you know, should have a chance to.
Chief Spalding and I have met in the principal clerk and the treasurer over there several times. No changes were made to his budget. I believe that, I believe he would be happy since the budget's approved and this is.
I just wanted to verify he was, if he had any questions.
Do you have any questions, Darren, or anybody?
No. I think you guys pay a time and effort. And like Brandon said, we met, I believe it was Thursday or Friday, and we talked over the weekend. And we, we scratched our heads on the budgets, and I took some stuff out. And to get into a certain area that I felt comfortable with the town and the select board.
The motion been made seconded to approve the fire budget to 211,581, of which 194,939 is to be raised by taxes for the fiscal year 2021, 2022. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. We got three minutes. Perfect. Library. I think so, too.
Make a motion that we prove the library budget of 225,614 dollars, with tax raised by taxes 124,063 dollars.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the Proctor Library budget with the numbers noted. I don't have them right in front of me. Could you get them, DeForest?
125,614 is the budget. 124 is the budget.
It is down by some 13,000 dollars, saving somewhere, I think it's somewhere in healthcare or some other.
Mark 101 is a single.
Yep, a little bit of variety of other things. Is there any discussion on the library budget? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that will also be included in the general fund voting. Transfer Station. Do we have a budget for tonight, Brandon, or is it, I know the presentation's been postponed, but?
Yep, the budget's complete. It's the last budget inside the smaller packet here. And we've updated the narrative to include the summary and the revenues and expenses as broken out. Would you like me to go through that?
What's that?
Would you like me to go through that?
Yes.
Okay. So Wethersfield, Reading, and West Windsor established a transfer station joint committee, as we've discussed several times throughout the year, which is a partnership among our three towns to create a fair and equal payment structure. Under the existing arrangement, Wethersfield pays a per parcel fee, Reading pays an annual assessment, and West Windsor pays as they use the transfer station. As demonstrated under revenues, Wethersfield's solid waste assessment is 77,300 compared to Reading at 18,635, and West Windsor at 15,000. In FY '22, so in FY '21, West Windsor revenue was 6,000. In FY '20, it was 3,900. In FY '19, it was 1785. Revenue from Reading has been stable at 18,635 since FY '18. During fall 2020, our administration issued an enforcement order at the transfer station, no permit, no entrance. Although the order was controversial in town, it was a priority in order to determine how many residents use a transfer station from each of our three towns. West Windsor, as a result, increased by 60%. Following this enforcement, the joint committee held a meeting and decided to hire DSM Environmental Services to create a business plan and assist in the implementation of a fair and equal payment structure. This will require a town meeting vote in West Windsor and potentially an increase in the budget in Reading. Budgeting for transfer station will change as we move into FY '23 next year. So as demonstrated below, we anticipate a 5,713 dollar increase in revenue in FY '22 at the transfer station. The increase in revenue is primarily due to the enforcement order at the transfer station, which will result in the cost of operating the transfer station being spread across our three towns more evenly than in FY '21. So it's not as big of a jump as we wanted to make, but it was a lot to take on. And they wanted to create this business plan, and they wanted to have something solid to present to their residents at town meeting, which we totally understand. So if we go to the revenue side of things, there's a 3,800 dollar increase in, a decrease in Wethersfield. Stable in Reading, 9,000 dollar increase in West Windsor, 3,200 dollar increase in solid waste tokens, 1,100 dollar increase in solid waste Reading punch tickets, a 1,364 dollar increase in solid waste West Windsor punch tickets, a thousand dollar decrease in recycling income, a zero dollar variance in other revenue. Moving into expenses, there's a 468 dollar increase in personnel, which equates to 2%. Office expenses increased by.
Hold your stand, five minutes.
Second.
Sorry.
Aye.
We're gonna.
Wait, I'm almost done.
I don't.
Okay. You want me to finish?
Yes.
Office expenses increased by 2418, utilities 902, trash tipage decreased by 2550, CND tipage increased by 5260. The variance in trash pickup is 266, CND 358, zero sort 607. Recycling expenses increased by 8,500, which was a result of our contract expiring with Kinsella, an RFP that was sent out of the waste, being voted in by the select board. Insurance increase of 154 for a total variance of 5,420 on both sides.
Motion to approve the transfer station enterprise fund operating budget 289,49.
Second that.
To what, John? Number 289?
289.
049.
Motion made seconded to approve the transfer station budget for the years 2021 to 2022 at a cost not to exceed 289,049. Any discussion? The only thing I would add is that Brandon's worked, and I know Paul has worked very hard with the three towns to try to make this happen. And it's still evolving, and may have a few hiccups, and we'll work them all out. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Need a motion, let's do the warrants.
Make a motion to blue warrant articles, January 19, 2021, general fund. Payroll 21,666 dollars and 44 cents, operating 19,653 dollars and 50 cents, 5 cents. Highway payroll 30,258 dollars and 4 cents, operating 17,377 dollars and 11 cents. Solid waste management fund payroll 3,485 dollars and 16 cents, operating 10,650 dollars, 98 cents. Library 2,666 dollars and 20 cents. MVP, I'll make the, let me just read it. MVP healthcare, January 11,965 dollars and 69 cents. MES open invoice from warrant 2,120 dollars. Grand total 61,767 dollars and 54 cents. What happened to the invoice from twin line?
It's right there.
Is it in the, in here?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
And what happened with it?
I haven't even had a second to take care of it. So if you wanna remove it, I can send a letter tomorrow.
I, as however guy, I talked to Raymond. Raymond said that it was justified. He explained the whole situation. I, it's state, but the way he explained it, I'm satisfied.
I don't do that. I'm not gonna, I mean, it talked about having to dig stuff out and couple manpower, couple men, so I don't know. I agree on the same thing, Ray.
It's a legitimate bill. What are you gonna do?
Right.
Well, there's only one thing to do. Ask for reconsideration about exactly what was needed and what was done. I mean, that's the only.
It was a judgment call. It was a four-foot snowstorm. He made a call.
No, 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 not on, not on his part. On the vendor that sent us the bill. That's all. That's all.
Move on.
Is that what the board wants to do? Brandon hasn't had a chance to ask about the, not, I'm not debating about the call to make that call. That's all. I know it was held, but if he's saying that it's part of this warrant, it's gotta be dealt with.
I don't think you'll get anywhere arguing with him about it.
No. That could be, but it's a matter of record about what then becomes the next step on using somebody that you didn't think was, I don't agree that it was justified, that's for sure.
I don't either.
So it was a bill that was sent, but it's like any other bill that you, that we all get, that when we get a bill in the mail and we go, holy cow, that makes your other decisions down the line affected and it auto.
I'll be specific about what bothered me the most about the bill. Looking at it was 100 dollar charge per hour for quote laborers. That's just, that's not reasonable. I'm sorry.
I'm not arguing the bill. We call a company.
I understand, I understand. No, I don't think we should argue the bill either, pay the bill, and let's find somebody else to take care of that business in the future.
Was there a second to the motion on the warrant? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Go ahead. Motion been made seconded to approve the warrants dated, it's getting late. What day is it? January 19, 2021. I got that one right.
Brandon, why was the MVP in that? I don't even know what MES is. Why were they segregated? And what account are they gonna get?
Healthcare, isn't it?
Yeah, but for what? Highway, general fund? All those in favor?
Well, I was gonna, I was gonna, but you had a question.
Russelley was just supposed to answer your question.
He was gonna answer it. Too late, the vote's taken. Somebody had a question. I was waiting for the answer. No answer. I want, I want a motion for executive session for personnel. Did we? Yeah, we voted. All those in favor, say aye.
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 We voted. Okay.
Most for executive session.
All those in favor, say aye. This'll take two or three minutes if we can get our act together.